Oh, thank you.
I'm jealous of the whole thing about some day.
This time, you know, it was pretty dreary or anything.
I love it this season.
You know what I mean?
It goes to buckets, buddy. I figured you were ready.
Alright, thank you.
I'm so used, you know, I was facing. I didn't continue with the rest of the press. I don't know if this is hot.
He's a eat a lot of money. You're out of money.
Now, better come here. I can't do one. I have to watch it.
I said, walk in, do it, get the car. Yeah, so he sees where nobody been. At all.
I'm gonna, I'm still yelping out those people.
Okay, don't we talk?
Okay.
You right there? And you should. Oh, you know, you can do a little right there.
Yes, sir. Left and right, how are you doing? Yeah.
Well, I'm sorry, my sister. Why she could come down from left to right? She's thirty now. I gotta wait for it to get to here.
How do you see it? We know that it's happening. It's like, oh, no. Woo, baby, it's trouble. I'm feeling good.
Did you win? I didn't ask, did you win?
I didn't see how much time I had.
No, I could've won this stuff though.
I know what the shop saying is.
It's the, in the shop, it is, the shop. I never bet. Oh, my God. That's like, I said, I had to go and just not be able to pass whatever I want. I like that state.
That was your, you were on there.
Just, just have fun. For me, it's more about food. Yeah, I'm agree.
Yeah, I can't wait for my, oh, my.
If I'm not going out, it's like, you need to go. They all, there's a restaurant, you know.
Alright, let's do this. Oh, my God. Oh, my.
Alright, good evening. Sorry about that, I think it's the, the gavel. Um, welcome to the Kansas City Public School Board of Directors, September twenty-second meeting. We'll call this meeting to order. In June, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Barca?
Present.
Ms. Buckner? Ms. Cortez?
Here.
Ms. Cord?
Here.
Dr. Jo?
Present.
Here.
Here. Alright, are there any, um, changes to the agenda? Any proposed changes to the agenda? Alright, I'm not hearing any, so is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Some.
Second.
Alright, June, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Barca?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner? Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Cord?
Yes.
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 Yes, the motion passes. Alright, we'll move right into public comment and Mr. Love, I think, there you are. Come on up to the podium, sir, welcome. I know you'll be surprised by this, but you have three minutes.
Thank you. We were talking about the budget earlier and, um, I'd like to make a suggestion that we, utilize these early, these children that are, uh, Septem- August and September birthday children, the five-year-olds that we just are gonna cut off for next year, utilize their funding for a pre-K or, uh, I'm sorry, a K-one program or a pre-K. And, uh, also, the state of Missouri has funding for five-year-olds for pre-K. That law was passed about, I don't know, four years ago. And so, we can literally have a world-class kindergarten program and it's really critical for this district because, I'll give you, uh, some of the research, like eight years ago, when Dr. Green was here, they identified that forty percent of the children entering kindergarten were eleven months behind. It's a huge gap. And so, his idea was, well, we need to fund summer school, uh, we need to maybe do a trial program and try to get children into summer school, uh, and he thought he had, had enough money for four hundred children, but there is a law that allows every child in this district to get funded for some, uh, summer school prior to entering kindergarten. But the key thing is, is we need to allow them an additional year to mature. And, and if you look at the statistics in the district, if you look at boys in particular, you'll see that the boys are not reading like the girls do. It's because they're six months developmentally younger than the girls. So, there's a year, year and a half difference between the oldest girl and the youngest boy. And on top of that, you have, uh, you have a, uh, a more, a greater likelihood that boys have, uh, dyslexia. And that's why this, uh, literacy lab, this, these world-class literacy labs that we have the money for, for a master's degree reading specialist and para, and reading para in every elementary school, we have the funding for it. All we have to do is choose that. This, uh, this, uh, these children that, I mentioned again, these ninety-eight children that were, a hundred percent of them got promoted out of kindergarten, it's obvious, you know, that around the country, typically last year, people lost four or five months in school. Uh, these were the absolute youngest children, it's not even legal to put them in unless they actually complete kindergarten. And it's breaking a law which everyone here is responsible for. It's a misdemeanor that was passed in seventy-seven and it says, if you don't comply with education laws under these sections in the law, you get up to a five-hundred-dollar fine and up to a year in the county jail. Dr. Patel knows about that law. Uh, and it's, we need to, uh, get that squared up because those children are disadvantaged to begin with and to put them into a place that they're most likely going to fail in first grade, it's not fair to them. So, I appreciate you all looking into that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Love. And I believe, um, Mr. Love is the only person who signed up for public comment, so we'll move on over to our district advisory council report. And, uh, Ms. Lyle is on Zoom with us, or Teams, one of those platforms.
I am, I'm on Zoom.
Hi there, welcome.
Thank you for having me, I really appreciate this virtual, uh, opportunity because I just got home from a tennis match, so thank you for that. Um, I am Angie Lyle, I serve as the DAC ex-chair and, uh, the district advisory committee or DAC is pleased to announce that we had our first general meeting, um, uh, on September fifteenth, which was just a little while ago. I think it was last week, actually, but I'm in a time warp, so. Our in-person meeting had very low attendance while our online meeting had about twenty-five people, including some of our school board members. Thank you for that and, uh, we really appreciate having that representation. Our DACX is still missing a current list of DAC delegates from each school, we're hoping to have that by mid-October. Uh, school principals have been emailed to ask if they have an organization and twenty-two have responded. Um, out of the twenty-two that have responded, fourteen said they do have a parent organization, but at this time, we do not know, uh, or have the final list of which schools those are. So, as you know, one of the goals, goals of the DAC is to empower each school to have their own parent organization. We're unable to meet that goal if we don't have the current list of schools, um, that have parent organizations and whether they have a DAC delegate or not, and so every week delays our progress and we would encourage any school principals that have not responded, uh, to please get in touch with us. And another realization while we continue to do the work of achieving our current goals is that our parent organizations do have a, or do not have, a streamlined process for setting up and maintaining funding sources, which can also be accessed with payment apps like Venmo, which is what we're seeing a lot of, uh, people requesting now. Um, we're working to identify a complete list of obstacles that our school organizations may face like that, uh, in the process of operating within the school district's, uh, policies. Our, our meeting, while not well-attended, did provide some very informative pieces of information that we very much appreciated, including from Travana Elec- Alexander Tony, the, uh, behavioral health manager who spoke about trauma, I'm sorry, trauma-informed pieces that affect our new code of conduct changes. I'm very sorry. We also heard from board member Candace Buckner, thank you, uh, for coming, and also Kelly Rachel, who spoke about the importance of our Blueprint 2030 process. Finally, we did ask parents to get involved with DAC committees, including, for example, our legislative committee, which is actively seeking parent involvement to contact City Hall right now and oppose the upcoming incentive deal for Hotel Bravo. An incentive deal which, as this board and Dr. Bedell are aware, uh, would significantly impact future funding for KCPS if approved. It would be a shame for those pieces to be wasted on such a small audience, so it was suggested to the communications team, and I've already heard back from, uh, Ms. Rachel, thank you, uh, that perhaps the smaller presentations could be edited down, uh, into smaller videos and then shared out on social media, the blog, et cetera, so that we can reach more people with the information that we shared. So, finally, I just wanna remind everyone that our meetings are open to the public, they're at six PM on the third Wednesday, with the exception of November, we had to move that one to November tenth. So, our next meeting is November tenth. Thank you so much for your time.
Great, thank you, Ms. Lyle, we appreciate everything that DAC is doing for our district. And with that, we will move it over to, um, Dr. Mark T. Bedell for the superintendent's report.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Chair, and good evening to all in attendance and all who are logging in and viewing this board session, board meeting session online. Um, we have a pretty important packed agenda here today and we wanna get right into it. We're gonna start off, um, under the superintendent's report with a video highlight regarding the, um, opening or the first day of school, because we haven't covered that yet. Uh, we'll give a marketing update and then, uh, we'll move into our ESR two and three funds update, um, and then we will have a Blueprint 2030 update, which will conclude the superintendent's report. So, if we can roll the footage now and get started, I would appreciate it. That was awesome, thank you, uh, Ms. Rachel and team for putting that together. We are, uh, pretty much one month into the school year and, um, the thing I will say that I'm, I'm most proud of is we've been able to keep every single one of our campuses open through the first month of the year. We have had nearly five hundred students or so that have been quarantined, um, so far this year. And in some schools, depending on school size and how contact tracing has, uh, been conducted, it, it's been far more and in some schools, very minimal. So, what I can tell you as I'm going in and visiting schools, even as you enter into kindergarten and, and pre-K classes, and I did go visit intentionally some kindergarten classes, the kids are following the rules, they're wearing their mask, they're doing the things that they need to do. I was at a football game on Saturday and a tenth grader, uh, shared with me that they absolutely do not wanna go back into virtual learning and, uh, will do everything that they can to hold each other accountable. So, um, I've been very proud of our students and for the most part, uh, what they've been doing to maintain a level of discipline in our schools. And we do believe getting through this first month, uh, that the battles are still ahead of us, but we, we, we know how to do this and we'll do it and the goal is, as usual, to keep our schools open in the entirety of the school year. So, I just wanna thank everybody for their hard work so far and ask everybody to continue to maintain the discipline so that we can keep our schools open. The, uh, next item is our marketing update, as you know, we provide a monthly marketing update to the board and the community around where we are and I'll pass that over to Ms. Rachel to go through these slides.
Good evening, board and Dr. Bedell, thank you for the opportunity to visit with you all this evening. Uh, we will open up our marketing and communications presentation for the month of September. History and previous context, we went over last month, the start of school marketing and communications and you had a preview of what, or a review of how the first, uh, couple weeks of school went. You've also heard from Amanda Holdsworth with Holdsworth Communications for our marketing partner, uh, contract upcoming. This is just another reiteration of our school marketing overview as well as our student recruiting overview, um, timelines, pipelines, documents that you see here on the screen. Current status, we're currently in our progress of media buys for our advertising and marketing campaigns that will be upcoming for the fall, winter, and spring. Uh, also, right now, we are preparing our new season of KCPS Home Room, in which we'll be doing coverage of pre-K teaching throughout the Kansas City Public Schools arena. And then on the screen here, you see some COVID communication and toolkit samples. You all have seen the protocols, flow chart, as well as the communication flow chart. These are the flow charts that we use whenever we have a COVID instance, as well as a communication, um, protocol for when our families need to be notified of any close contacts or, um, quarantine possibilities. Future planning, we are looking at Blueprint 2030 engagement as one of our big projects and processes for the next few months. As a board, you did receive that overall engagement timeline in your Friday update and so you have that specifically, um, in your documents in the Friday update. We also had our ribbon-cutting open house for our new KCPS International Welcome Center last Friday, thank you for those of you who joined us, uh, we're currently doing some media around that and doing all of our photos, video, and we'll be promoting that more into the coming weeks as we have all of the, um, visuals from that event. I do encourage you to go visit the Welcome Center if you had not a chance to do so. It is wonderful, there is kids there, they're, they're thriving, they're, they're having a good time, they have adults who are caring, understand their language, speak their language, and it's a beautiful opportunity for our students. Successes, uh, you all get to see our media analytics once a month. These snips are from our August numbers. We had two hundred and sixteen media stories, print and television, in the month of August, of which one hundred and thirty-three were positive, eighty-three were neutral, and zero were negative. Just as a quick reminder for you and for our audience, that negative, I'm sorry, that neutral number eighty-three means it's pieces of information, first day of school, COVID protocols, items of information that don't necessarily sway neutral or negative or positive, but just give information to our community. The other snips that you see here, Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, and YouTube, these are our social media analytics that we measure and you can see that every month, we continue to add new followers. Every month, we have been in the green, adding new followers and audience members to our social platforms. Oh, hang on, I missed that, okay. So, preparing our recruiting pipeline and marketing timeline, you saw those snips in the previous couple slides, again, successes of getting these in place, outlined and reviewed and overviewed for the upcoming year, as well as preparing for count day numbers, um, as a success that we've been focusing on for the past few weeks with our principals and our teams. Timelines and action plans, we are seeking approval of Holdsworth Communications this evening. This is the estimated timeline and action plan for that partnership with associated dates. Barriers, policy, legislative, financial, we continue to list enrollment trends nationally, regionally, and locally on this barrier slide because it continues to be a barrier as we approach our enrollment, um, conversation. Also, upcoming legislative session, we've been meeting with Legislative Affairs, Government Affairs, uh, Board Committee to draft those board and legislative priorities, which you see as you, in draft form, I believe Ms. Wolfsey will talks about those with you all as a board, though we have some challenges and some items to address this legislative session. We will need your help as a board and our community's help and advocates to help us in that session this year. Also, one of the barriers we continue to see, it's just the communication fluctuations in the guidance and in the, um, operational challenges that we have in KCPS, but again, tackling those, facing those head-on, working on solutions and making sure that we're being very transparent and communicative when we can do so. Action items, um, again, seeking approval of Holdsworth Communications agreement this evening, it is in the business items that we will talk about this evening. And that was very quick and very brief for you all this evening.
It was, thank you, Ms. Rachel. Questions? Ms. Wolfsey?
Thank you. Um, I just wanna follow up on the current status part of the KCPS Home Room, I kind of had chatted about this at our, um, pre-board meeting. I noticed that we have a, an item in consent that we'll be approving around some additional expenditures related to KCPS Home Room. So, what I wanted to ask was, hold on, I wrote my notes down. Um, I know we're moving forward with KCPS Home Room this year with a focus on pre-K. Um, as we're now spending some additional dollars on this effort in addition to the time, uh, personnel and district resources, could we as a board have an evaluation of that Home Room program from last year?
Yes.
For twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two? And what I was gonna, um, just, I kinda wanted to get some feedback from my colleagues. I had written down what I was thinking we might want as a board to see, but I don't wanna presume to speak for everybody, so, um, just what were your goals? Um, you know, what was the amount of time that we spent on that, um, not only in hours, but then also maybe what that cost in the, in real dollars? And, you know, what do you see as the return on that investment and then why, you know, the decision was made to now switch to pre-K, which I kinda understand since we're all back into school again? But could you then just share with us how you then, you know, what the goals are for this year and how you plan on evaluating that as well? And it doesn't need to be right now, but maybe in a board packet or a further, so that was my thought and I'm looking to my, uh, board chair to see if anybody else has any other feedback.
Ms. Buckner?
Um, I think my, my biggest thing is like, uh, from a parent's perspective, where can I find KCPS Home Room? Because I'm a parent in the district, I have no idea where to find it.
Yep, KCPS Home Room airs on Thirty-Eighth the Spot from eight to nine o'clock every day, Monday through Friday. And we did, we did a lot of promo last year around that, our new season is still ready to be launched, it's not launched yet this year for the pre-K, so we'll do more promos again when it's launching our new season this fall.
Okay. Um, and so, I guess my question, my next question is how much data do we have, like what kind of data are you collecting? Are we measuring like engagement data, like engagement with KCPS Home Room?
For KCPS Home Room specifically? Yes, so as part of our media analytics, if you go back and look at our month-to-month analytics and the end-of-year report from last school year, we measure viewership for that program and you will see a consistent trend up from when we launched last year to the end of, I feel like I'm fading in and out, my, I think my reverb is gone. Um, because it's a trend upward of viewership from when we launched last year to the end of our season, um, in May. And I'll get you those numbers, but you can see the numbers in viewership and that's how we've been measuring engagement with that program.
Thank you.
I think that's just, all of that, based on what Ms. Wolfsey, Wolfsey was asking, that's part of that report.
Yes, I think that's ROI, that's time and hours, those are goals, all of the things that we can provide for you. Uh, one note, Ms. Wolfsey, about the, um, contract under consent for the twenty-five-thousand dollars, that's all within the budget that you all approved for KCPS Home Room as a whole and so it's not outside of the scope of our budget we've allotted to that program.
Um, so, one of the reasons why I ask and I don't, I don't want this to be taken the wrong way, so there are pri- uh, not priorities, uh, policies that we have that, and I think actually Ms., um, oh, Ms. Lyle was speaking about them earlier in her DAC report, about how there is actually a board policy that states we're supposed to have, um, parent representation groups at every school.
Right.
So, I'm always looking at these sorts of spends in the terms of, you know, are we using our dollars and our time and our resources for the things that we, we must have to be compliant versus what we might want to have and it, I'm just wanting to see the thought process there.
Yep, sure, great point. Um, we do pay for KCPS Home Room out of ESR dollars as well, so they're federally funded dollars that we've been using to that, um, supplement last year, the online portion of being at home and learning. And this year, we feel like we just got into our groove of the programming, the teachers teaching, the teachers doing their lessons online or on TV. Um, we feel like we got into that groove and we wanted to continue that this year, again, to have a presence there. We have a really great contract with KSHB that allows us to do this at a very much reduced cost, um, for the community and we really felt like pre-K was the right decision based on viewership, what age people are watching the show, as well as what teachers, um, were available to teach and what content areas, the reading, writing, and the math. And so, that switched to pre-K, again, with our kids being in school, uh, we wanted to reach the pre-K audience of students who might be at home versus students who'll be in school with us.
Mr. Barca?
Sorry, thanks Rita. Um, I, there's a look. Um, so for our pre-K audience, how does that segue with our own pre-K programs and the timing of which they report to school?
Uh, yeah, so, again, our pre-K programs vary of start date of different locations when they come to school, but again, that eight to nine, we might not- But again, that 8:00 to 9:00, we might not be hitting all of our Kansas City PS, our Kansas City Public Schools pre-K kids, but we are hitting the larger community of our Kansas City region and beyond with pre-K students, whether they're KCPS students or not.
Okay. Yeah, I just asked that because I've got to report to school at 8:30, so.
Sure.
We can get 30 minutes of it.
There you go.
Just trying to understand that other 30 minutes and who we're actually broadcasting to. I want to go back to the media buy component. I know some of my colleagues on the board previously have talked about the effectiveness of some of that, right? The billboards, right? I think I've seen billboards facing the wrong directions on some of the highways heading into Kansas that I was thinking, is this really reaching the audience that we're trying to recruit? And so I wonder if there's more, or what goes on behind that? And how you select, or if it's kind of, you buy eight billboards and it's first available, and that's why we get certain positions? Similarly, when we buy in certain newspapers and not others? Like what is the strategy there? And I'm not asking for it right now necessarily, but maybe something in the future. So we understand some of that component. And I'll stop if you want to fill in any blanks there before.
No, happy to provide that for you. We do, of course, have very intentional reasons on why we choose certain billboards based on geofencing, based on school location, based on neighborhood population, amount of students, school-aged children that are in that neighborhood. We also, last month, provided all of those media buys for you in your consent items that you all approved last month. So you can go back and reference that if you want to see specific items that we did go into contract with last month. But I think the billboard piece specifically, again, geofencing and then the newspapers, we cover almost all the newspapers in Kansas City versus a specific one. I would love to hear more about that that you feel like we're missing.
Switching topics to COVID communications, can you tell us where, I guess, your office and your department focuses on the communications versus maybe a principal? Because I think some of the parents I've talked to are like, I don't know who I'm supposed to be hearing from. I know we've got this chart, but it seems that there's kind of an array of confusion for some parents.
Yeah, so we, as a communications department, have worked with Sarah and Lauren, Carver Communications, and our nursing managers, as well as our principals and our nurses at each school to provide templates, provide toolkits for all of the communication that might need to go to students if they're a close contact, if they're just in the same classroom, if they need to be quarantined, if they do not need to be quarantined. So we have an array of templates with specific information, specific instructions that go out to students and families based upon how their contact traced. And so with that, the principals and the nurses at the school will then, based on guidance from the nurse and the CDC and the Health Department, they will allot those specific families to which letter they're going to receive, and those get sent from the school level.
Gotcha, thank you.
And just to follow up on that, I want to add, you know, Dr. Baddell referenced the almost 500 students who've had to be in some sort of a quarantine or some sort of contact list that we've had to reach. This is happening in real time. We have principals and nurses most every day working with families, notify them, to talk with them, to give them information, to find out information about where they were, who they were in contact with, working with teachers, working with lunchroom aides, working with recess duty folks, specials teachers, to find out who was sitting where. And so I do ask for a little bit of grace and patience with our principals and nursing staff, just that it might take 12 hours, it might take 24 hours for us to notify families, but we're doing it as quickly as we can to be as accurate as we can with our families. We don't want to alarm folks, but we want to be very accurate in what we're communicating to them.
All right, thank you, Ms. Rachel, appreciate it.
Hey, thank you, Ms. Rachel, for that update. The next update is ESR 2 and ESR 3 funds, and this is also just a part of our responsibility to offer transparency to this board and to the community at large around what the district is doing and the accountability for how we're utilizing these federal funds that we've received. And so for this presentation, we will have our deputy superintendent, Dr. Jennifer Collier, who will take us through this portion.
Good evening, Dr. Baddell, Board Chair Hogan, Board members, staff, and community. I am Dr. Jennifer Collier, and I will be walking us through ESR funds, our ESR funds update this evening. I'll also have joining me Mrs. Becky Nace, and she is our Director of Professional Learning and Federal Programs. So here's a little history and previous context around some of the funding that we've received due to COVID-19. The initial funds that came in were termed as CARES Act funding, and you can see that that was provided to us in 2021 fiscal year, and that was provided through five different grants that are listed there. And these funds have primarily been expended for KCPS at 86%. However, the non-publics are still at 68%. But these were the initial funds that we received as a school system. And now we're looking at primarily ESR 2 and ESR 3 funds that we are utilizing this year in ESR 2, and then funds that we will be able to access next fiscal year for ESR 3. However, there are some stipulations tied to usage, and I'll talk about that in just a moment. And so this initial allocation for ESR 2, 29.1 million, that has already been approved by DESI. We are obligated to complete spending on that by September 30, 2023. The budget was fully authorized on June 30, 2022. Will be, I'm sorry, it's fully authorized by June 30, 2022, and these funds are currently being used. We're using these in various ways that I'm going to cover in just a few moments. Then looking at ESR 3 allocation is much larger, 64.7 million. And that application was submitted to DESI on August 23, 2021, so just recently. That was submitted. We are currently waiting approval. And this is the stipulation for spending. We must utilize all of ESR 2 before we can even access ESR 3. So this is going to be really important in terms of our timeline and monitoring usage. And I'll talk a little bit about that as well when I get to that portion. And then we must be obligated and spent, these funds must be obligated and spent by September 30, 2024. At this time, Ms. Nace is going to come forward to share a little bit about what our engagement has been around seeking feedback from our stakeholders around usage of ESR 2 and 3. I do want to note that there was no requirement by DESI for us to engage stakeholders for ESR 2, however, we did on our own. And then, of course, we also wanted to meet the requirements of ESR 3, and she's going to talk about both of those now.
Good evening, Dr. Baddell and Board, Community Members, excuse me. I will be speaking with you just a minute on how we surveyed our stakeholders for feedback on most effective ways to use the elementary and secondary schools' emergency relief funds, which we all know as ESR 2 and ESR 3. This first pie chart that you see here, as Dr. Collier said, we were under no obligation based on the guidelines to survey stakeholders for ESR 2 dollars. However, I think it was very important to Dr. Baddell and the cabinet that we get that feedback. And so we reached out to three of our major stakeholders, our teachers, our parents, and our principals, and we asked them to rank in order of importance five allowable instructional expenditures for the funding. That pie chart represents about a little over 500 respondents. And you can see here how they responded to those. So our teachers really felt like reading and math interventionists were very important, as well as building subs. Our principals felt that same way about the building subs and reading and math interventionists. And then our parents felt like, again, reading and math interventionists, you see a pattern here, and then also instructional paras. I'm not going to get too deep in the weeds on how, what the actual expenditures were for ESR 2, because Dr. Collier's going to come back and talk to you about that. For ESR 3, the guidelines were a little bit different. There was, as Dr. Collier said, there was a stipulation that we reach out to our stakeholders. And not only did they require us to reach out to stakeholders, but they were pretty specific on who we needed to reach out to. And you'll see that list along the side there. Again, this pie chart represents a little over 800 respondents from the adults that took the survey. This survey is still open, so we're brainstorming with Kelly's group and on how we can continue to get that feedback. We have submitted a plan for ESR 3. We're waiting on approval from that, from DESI. But we also know that we can get feedback and we can adjust accordingly based on that feedback. So what we did is we worked with research and accountability, and we expanded our survey a little bit. And we decided that it wasn't really appropriate to ask people to rank instructional resources along with operational resources. We just felt like it wasn't fair to say, you know, do you want a reading interventionist, or do you want HVAC and new windows? So what we did is we worked with research and accountability, and we came up with three different areas for the survey. And so we had ideas related to instruction, ideas related to operations, and then ideas related to technology. And you can see by each category there what the order of importance was. Again, it was very important that we get the instructional piece right, that we really get people, teachers, paras, instructional opportunities in the buildings to mitigate learning loss and accelerate learning. We also then reached out to our 7th through 12th graders, which this represents about 1,000 kids that responded back. And we asked them very specifically, I want to read it to you so I get it right. We said, which of the items, and we gave them a list, will make the most positive difference in your school? And they ranked a list of 1 to 10, and these are the top five. So again, you see that reading and math interventionists, before and after-school tutoring, building subs, student-peer tutoring, and then teachers for tutoring small groups. So our students, 7th through 12th grade, were also really very focused on that instructional piece. What they were telling us they needed that they had missed because of the pandemic. So I'm going to turn it back over to Dr. Collier, and she's going to get more specific about the funding sources.
Thank you, Ms. Nace. Something I do want to mention about those surveys that we didn't mention is that we did have a box, a comment box. So we did provide some guidance around some things that people could select and rank, but we also asked for input in case there were things that we had not considered that our staff members, our family, and our students and teachers decided that they thought would be important for us to consider in the usage of ESR funds. So for future planning, ESR 2 and 3, we have one primary outcome, one primary goal, and that is to accelerate learning. Accelerate learning for our students, and that's measured through student assessment. However, there are some sub-outscomes, and we took the time to go through the entire budget and to itemize those things and categorize them according to these sub-outscomes. So the first that you see there, and they're listed, I'm going to go through them on each slide, so I won't name them all here, but I just wanted to call your attention to that there at this point. So let's go to the first sub outcome. That first sub outcome is increasing direct instructional and building support. And so those are the things that we are immediately applying in our schools. We've already began to place some of these staff members. The majority of them are FTE and staff members. And so we have added additional, 10 additional elementary reading interventionists, and we have those in ESR 2. We're actually increasing those numbers for ESR 3. We felt like we needed time to prepare for the hiring of these staff members. Sometimes we have difficulty in hiring interventionists, and so we wanted to make sure that we are preparing this year for those hires that we're wanting for next year for reading interventionists. I did not highlight math interventionists because you'll notice that they are factored into ESR 2. We know that the area of math is a concern for us, is an area of focus for us this year. However, our rationale for not putting math interventionists into ESR 2 is that we were struggling at the time, and we still are, with filling math core positions. And we felt that it was more important for us to ensure that we had certified math teachers in our core classrooms before we start adding in interventionists. However, we do have a plan for how we're going to address that this year. And I'll talk about that in just a moment. We also thought it was important to do student-peer tutoring, giving our students opportunities to lead and to help serve and to support others, using their skills, their abilities, their strengths. And so starting second semester, we will be hiring some of our students at the high school level to tutor their peers, also middle school and elementary students. The part-time teachers, now this is where we're going to start looking at our support for math. So we're seeking part-time retired teachers, certified teachers, to come in to do tutoring in small groups for students, and really primarily focusing on math. Our curriculum instruction team is now designing some expectations and guidelines for those tutors because it's one thing to get these supports and just throw them into the school, and we hope that they do what we intend for them to do. And it's another thing to be very intentional about designing and communicating to them what we expect. And so our CNI team are currently, they're currently working on that. And then when we hire them in, they will monthly meet with our CNI team to ensure that they're doing the things that we need for them to do in terms of supporting our math program, and just making sure they have the supports that they need to achieve what they need to do in the schools. And then we also have individual building and department allocations. We've talked about this before, but we allocated a certain amount to every school per pupil, based per pupil, but then we also went back to look in terms of equity, and we provided additional supports for our Tier 2, and then even greater supports for our Tier 3. So we wanted to make sure that we gave everyone a base, but then also looking at providing our schools what they need based on the needs of those schools and according to how we've tiered them. So these are our direct instructional and building supports. Sub outcome number two is increasing access to alternative methods of education. We have, if nothing else, that we've learned during COVID-19 is that the traditional learning environment is not necessarily for everyone. Our students have various needs, and we wanted to make sure that we are meeting those needs and providing those learning opportunities for our students. And so one of the things that we've implemented this year is evening school. And so we have evening school staff, we have about three staff members currently. And then we have, at this point, 41 students who are enrolled in the evening school. We also have family support teachers. If you remember the last board meeting, I mentioned, I think we called it quarantine liaison teachers, and it was a little bit confusing. So we decided to go back and change the name there, and these are our family support teachers. And we've just recently hired one, and we're going to be hiring two others that will help support us in ensuring that our students who are quarantining have access to synchronous instruction. As I said, last year, what we did worked for where we were, but we really felt that this year we wanted to personalize the experience for our students, even when they have to quarantine. And so we have one person currently trying to manage the large numbers we have, but we have two others that we're going to hire in to help us so that that person's reaching out to the family, they're making the connection with the family and the student with the Kansas City Virtual Academy teacher, ensuring that they have the link for the class, and then just being there as a resource for the family over those 10 or 14 days. The next one is, and so that actually is an example of how we are... There's some real-time needs that come up that maybe we didn't factor in, we hadn't thought about that. We learned that our needs for quarantining are much greater this year than what they were in the spring of last year. So we did make some quick pivots, and we plan to continue to do that. We're going to try to plan as proactively as we can, but when we see a need, we will make that pivot and address that need that we have. And then also hotspots, we know that that's a continued need, making sure that our families are able to access internet if they're needing to work from home. Our sub outcome three is enhancing family and student access, engagement, and communications. And so we have, we're making sure that we have supports around talking points, making sure that our families can be communicated to in their native language. All of our schools currently use this, but we just wanted to make sure that we have that resource available continuing this year and next year. And then also homeless transportation. We already factored that into our operating budget, but we wanted to allot additional in case we have greater needs. We know that homeless students is one of the populations that was most highly impacted by COVID-19, not the only one, but we wanted to make sure that we have adequate support for those families if that need increases this year. And that's for ESR 2 and 3, so that's this year and next school year. Okay, ESR, I'm sorry, sub outcome number four. This is all around teacher capacity, making sure that our teachers are prepared to meet the needs of our students during this period. And so we're looking at enhancing our teachers in the areas of math and literacy. We understand why both of those are very important. And so we are putting funds toward professional development for our math and also for our literacy and stipends for those teachers. So we thought that that was important for us to do as well. Improving daily building operations and support in schools. One of the expenditures that I think has proven to be most valuable to, if you ask our principals, and that is building substitutes. And it's probably something that we will continue to look at and consider even after COVID-19 because we've always struggled to secure subs through our contracted service, Kelly Services. But what we have found is that we're having great success with our KCPS subs. And these are folks that we've hired on to serve in just about any capacity that our principals and schools need. They're there every day, they are our employees, and they receive benefits. And so these... And so these folks are showing up and they're supporting in schools. The only downside is that we only gave one to every school. All of our, um, I won't say all, but majority of our principals are asking for more. So that is something we did factor into ESSER three, increasing our building subs. And so once again, I think this is one of those areas we'll have to reassess after, um, this COVID-19 period and all that we're dealing with to determine, is this the route that we need to go even into the future? Then looking at sub outcome number six, enhancing our instructional environment. We wanted to make sure we have classrooms that are future-ready, um, classrooms that are, um, designed uh, to meet the learning needs of our students, um, also furniture, things that are easier to clean and to manage. And so that's one of the areas that we focused on. We saw that a lot of our schools were, were actually requesting that, um, in ESSER two, so we did put that into ESSER three. Um, also repairing, looking at our indoor air quality. Um, we've heard all about a lot of our deferred maintenance and what our needs are around that, so we wanted to make sure that we allotted funds to address that for, um, the safety in our buildings, and then also a HVAC controller. Um, that was also a need for us, and so that's something that we focused on. Um, increasing access to college and career opportunities. Um, we're looking at our restorative justice personnel. As you are aware, we have been expanding that program. We started with one school, then it extended to two, um, schools last year, and this year we added on to twelve schools. And this is another program that really helps our students, um, understand how to interact with one another, and it te- it teaches a lot of those soft skills that our students need that will allow them to not only be successful in, in their schools now, but even in careers and college and career and later opportunities. Um, also the RISE mentor specialists. I want to flip these, so I can talk about the college access specialists first. That is, those are folks who are addressing the entire student body, uh, and then maybe more focused on juniors and seniors, but making sure that our students are aware of opportunities, um, resources that are available, how to fill out applications and things like that. But the RISE mentor specialists, which is, um, coming through our equity department, this, these are folks who are focusing on our students who, um, we're seeing continue to fall through the cracks even though we have a lot of safety nets and supports already in place. And these are people who are connecting one-on-one with students and really helping to walk them through so that they can, number one, meet graduation, and then be prepared for college and career after that. So they're a little more specialized in this college, um, access work. Um, then we have the mitigation and response to COVID-19. We did add additional nursing staff because we did anticipate that that was going to be a need for us this year. Also supports around contact tracing, and even as recently, over the last couple of weeks, seeing what our needs are around that, um, we have, um, have looked at adding, we, we are actually adding staff to help us with some of that contact tracing because it is overwhelming for our current staff to try to manage that in addition to their everyday duties and the roles that they're, um, required to do in the school. So we are adding staff to help support us in that area. Also, you all understand our needs around cold storage, making sure that we're able to, um, provide food for our children, having tho- that in place for ourselves, and then also replacing the fountains, um, in our schools and our district buildings, because we even have it here at the BOE, uh, with bottle filling stations. Sub outcome nine focuses on support for digital resources, and that includes software and hardware. And so we did add additional, um, technology staff to help support us through this period. I think seventeen additional staff. Also, um, unfortunately, we do have, uh, quite a few students, um, or quite a few devices that are being damaged. It's interesting, uh, we've had, we were just talking about that in Cabinet on Monday, just the number of devices that are being damaged and needing to be repaired. And so, um, fortunately, we did factor that into ESSER two and three so that when that happens, we can quickly get those devices repaired and back into the hands of students so that they can continue, um, accessing, um, instruction. And then also, obviously, we needed more Chromebooks and testing carts in the school, so those resources are available each day as students arrive. And then here is just a, uh, a pie chart, if you will, of our ESSER two and three spending. And it really, it just, it actually shows you the actual dollar amounts, um, that are spent there. Um, the first one is should, the first bullet really should say, um, the, hold on, it should say, direct instructional and building support, so that needs to be corrected, that very first bullet. But the largest expenditure at this point is enhancing the instructional environment. Um, the second was purchase in, in support of digital resources, and then the third was direct instructional and building support. Um, so you can just, you can see, um, where our spending has gone in terms of ESSER two and three. And then some of our successes, um, we are fully compliant with the twenty percent requirement, uh, under ESSER three, um, for instructional purposes. And so we did meet that, and you can see we requested a twenty-eight point six-two percent for ESSER three. Um, we also achieved having supports in place this year, um, staff in place that we, um, have supporting us from ESSER two. Then there were also three schools in our International Welcome Center that had capital projects done. Um, those three schools are Border Star, James Elementary, and TruSt. Um, we also increased our virtual enrollment, um, this year, and then our secondary one screens were received, and they're currently be- being deployed in our schools. So here are our timelines and our action plans. Um, so as we talked about, it's important that we, um, that we fully expand ESSER two before we can even access ESSER three, so we, we don't want to get to the end and discover we have not spent adequately. And so we do have some quarterly checks already built in, um, built in with our building principals, built in with departments, um, to make sure that we are spending what we should, um, as we go. Um, and so you can see here some of the, the key dates that are there. Um, I do want to mention, we are also doing a monthly review of our school and departmental budgets at the leadership level, so looking at those budgets, um, and making sure that we are where we need to be in terms of, terms of our expenditures. So some of the barriers, policy, legislative, financial, um, in regards to eligibility and use guidance, um, just the very specific requirements, um, we, we did have some places where we had to deny, um, usage of funds that did not meet or fit the criteria, and so, um, that was somewhat of a barrier. Um, also, uh, there's more external audit requirements due to the large number of funds that we have coming in under ESSER two and three. And then also very important piece is that maintenance of equity, um, and that's just ensuring that we're not, um, providing less resources or less supports to our schools and buildings that have the greatest needs. And we achieve that through our, our equity distribution that I talked about earlier, making sure that in addition to the base per pupil allocation, we also provided additional funds for tier two and tier three schools. Um, the timeline for access to ESSER three, um, once again, that just goes back to our need to, to spend all of two before we can access three. And then I think a, a big piece is thinking about how do we sustain some of this, especially the, the components and things that we, um, determine are really valuable and that can help us even to the future, even after this funding ends and is no longer available, thinking about how do we continue some of that? So that's something that we are considering at this point as well. Um, our action items is we, we're wanting to complete hiring for ESSER two. We do have several positions that are, that still need to be filled. We've done most of our building subs, I think we've done all the building subs. We've done the majority of our instructional support, um, assistants, or what we call paraprofessionals. Um, we will need to hire our tutors. That's where we are now looking at, um, hiring those part-time tutors that will come in to help support us in math. Um, also, there's a couple of bids, uh, preparing those that need to be, uh, go out, and that's for the cold storage unit in addition to the, um, uh, uh, I'm sorry, in, oh, in addition to the air quality and mechanical projects, those two still need to go out for bid. We have to complete the installation of the bottle, uh, filling stations, um, deploying the one screens at our secondary high schools. And then we're also looking at continuing vaccination promotion and supports, and we'll be bringing more information to the board around ways that we are intending to incentivize our, um, staff to get vaccinated. And that is all.
That was a lot. Thank you, Dr. Collier and Ms. Nace. I appreciate that.
It is a lot.
Uh, and all was.
I tried to go quickly.
No, it was great, but it was, yeah, it's a lot. Um, Dr. Jones?
Thank you for explaining all that, Dr. Collier. That was very helpful. Just one quick question, do you feel like the way that the, the projected funds are laid out would, that would accommodate for, um, increasing our capacity to also promote, um, the childhood immunization or is childhood COVID vaccination once that becomes available? And it's, it seems to be coming pretty soon, so just wondering how flexible those plans are.
Right, so once again, a lot of this is fluid. You know, when we look at ESSER three, I mean, we can still go in and make changes. We anticipate doing that, just as we had to do for ESSER two. Um, there are some things that we saw that we needed, so as things change, as, um, requirements and, um, legislation changes and things like that, we will look at how we can utilize those funds to help support us in, with, um, initiatives such as childhood vaccinations.
And I'll tell you, uh, that is a conversation, um, that we're having with our weekly meeting with the council and the superintendent. So, um, as, as the, the folks are working with, with individuals in DC, and so I get that information, we'll make sure that we keep you all apprised of it. But that is, that is definitely, we, we see that potentially heading in that direction.
Ms. Ford?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Collier. That was a lot. But I am curious to know, and this might be a Dr. Boudreau question, just in terms of, um, this might be more related to the direct instruction, like what are we anticipating, um, our theory of change is going to be related to how this is going to all impact student achievement and student outcomes?
I think I can answer.
From an academic standpoint?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, that's part of our, our conversation we've been having as a team, as we've been going through these deep data dives and, and, and ultimately being able to take this data that's, that's trickling in now, and although the data doesn't count towards anything, I think it gives us baseline data around where every single school is. And this is what I've said to principals at the last principal's meeting last Thursday. You know, we're, we're going to hold schools harmless. And what I mean by that is, we're not going to be pulling teachers out of schools because the second you start doing that, teachers will just resign. They, some people come and they say, "I came to this district to work at Central High School, and this is the type of school I want to work at." So pulling these teachers out because a school may have not hit their enrollment numbers, I think could hurt us even more, um, while we know we still have vacancies that we're filling. Um, but so what we said was, we hold you harmless, but everybody around value-add, there has to be accountability around growth. And if we have X percent of kids living in below basic, every school has goals that they have to work to move kids out of below basic and move them into basic, and then move them from basic into proficient. And we think all of these resources will give us the flexibility to be able to move these kids at a faster rate because everybody knows, you saw on the news, what the data showed, the whole state has dropped across the board. So we, when we talk about our plan being ultra-focused on accelerating learning, all of these resources, at this point, there's no excuse. Like, we, we have to use these resources to grow these kids at a much faster rate, to catch them up, and then ultimately to get them back to where they need to be. And so those conversations are the conversations we're having in Cabinet. Um, we're, we're going to have our retreat that will go even deeper into what these goals look like as we're able to get this new data and to be able to draw conclusions from that.
Yeah, I would just.
How was I answering your question?
I would just add on there, I really think that our reading interventionist, um, looking forward to math interventionist next year, um, but even the, the usage of our part-time tutors, um, I'm anticipating that that's going to really help us make a difference this year, um, with, um, accelerating learning, and then also addressing any, um, type of learning stagnation that may have occurred, you know, over the last year. I'm really focusing in, and that's why we, we, when we talked as a team, we wanted to make sure that we didn't just throw all these resources at the school without a real plan and without real, um, structured guidelines and expectations around that. Because if we do that, we may just come out with, with, with no outcome. If we just throw it in there and say, "Look, we put all these resources in the school." We want to make sure that we do at this level all that we can to help support the needs of the school. And of course, we'll do a lot of that in collaboration with our principals, but we do want to be clear about, when these resources are coming into our school, how should they be utilized? And we have expectations around that.
Mr. Barker?
Yeah, a couple of questions. Uh, I, I first want to acknowledge that this, this one hundred percent is needed, right? I mean, the, in our schools, the supports that are there for the folks who are in our buildings now, I want that to be like, I get it, and I agree. My concern is that this could be more short-term than the possibility of impacting the long-term of this dollars. So how do we appropriately balance that, right? If we're, if we're talking about investing in these, uh, individuals to support, how are we going to sustain that after the ESSER dollars dry up?
I mean, that's a great question, and honestly, um, we believe that the work that we're going to continue to engage on in the next presentation you all are going to hear is around Blueprint 2030. The goal around Blueprint 2030 is to ensure that we're going to have a sustainable system that have these types of supports for the long term.
It's almost like that was staged or something, Dr. Jones?
Nah, I mean, you, you just threw a nice alley-oop.
Right.
So, so one, one other follow-up. Uh, in terms of, I saw, I think it was the facilities side, um, I saw, yeah, so, slide forty-three. Um, as I'm looking at some of these investments, right, the MERV thirteen filters, the HVAC staffing, have we done either an air quality study, an energy audit, anything that has defined the true understanding of our systems at that level? Um, to talk about what, where we're going to invest, where we're not, right? Because unfortunately for you all, I, I went to safety science school and have some background in some of this.
Yeah, we've done a couple of different things, but are going to be continuing, right? The more information you get, the more you know you need to study, right? So we did start with an engineering study for air quality water. We did a variety of things for each and every building, and so we've got that as a basis, um, start. We now, as a part of our Blueprint 2030 work, um, with our architect and our engineers, we're continuing to assess systems at a building-by-building level, looking at controls. Dr. Collier talked about an HVAC controller because we don't have systemic controls, which we know is really critical to good energy management. We have it in some, but not all. And so we are trying to use dollars to move that direction. That is not to say that this little bit will do it, but that we're working really hard to.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Collier, today. I think I just need clarity on the spending summary. You, uh, made some, you made some corrections to the bullet points in, in my, uh, this paper isn't easy to see. So if you can go back to that slide.
Okay. There we go. I don't know if that's much easier to see either. That's why I brought my glasses up.
Okay, so you said, um, the bullet points had changed?
Um, just that first bullet point, that, the first bullet point says accelerated learning, and that actually should be direct instructional and building support. It was just a typo there, error.
And that would be, um, five million?
I'm sorry.
I, I want to get the numbers.
Um, that's, uh, ten million?
Okay. The colors are hard to see too.
Yes, they are, um.
So ten million for direct instruction, right?
Correct.
And then, um, the building, improving daily building operations is, uh, a hundred seventy thousand, a hundred twenty-seven thousand? No, that's five million, sorry.
Yes.
Okay. And so the last one that I ha- okay, so then enhancing instructional environment is forty million?
Yes.
Okay. So, um, a- and the reason why I'm going to ask this is because I understand, um, after having conversations with you, but I think it's important to live publicly, like, if our outcome is accelerated learning, that is our primary outcome, can you please, like, unpack why we're spending forty million dollars on our learning environment?
Okay, I'm going to go back to that slide to see what those items are. I know it has a lot to do with our facilities, um, and, let's see, what page is that? Okay, yeah, so a, a large portion of that, um, is actually around some of our, um, the repairs and the maintenance of facilities, so around that, um, indoor air quality, um, that is required for us. We are spending on that, and that's a, a bit, large portion. And Linda may need to come and talk a little bit more about, um, about that particular piece. And then also the HVAC controller. I mean, those are, I know that those things are probably taking up the majority of that portion that we're looking at there, but it, but those are items that are really pertaining to enhancing our, um, facilities, and really the learning environments for our students.
Okay, so do you have an exact number on how much, um, was spent on new classroom furniture?
One point five million. Yeah, but that's for ESSER three.
Yeah, um, I, I think what I have, uh, a concern that I have is like, I'm thinking about, uh, learning. Yeah, um, I, I think what I have, uh, a concern that I have is like, I'm thinking about, uh, learning loss or delayed learning, whatever term we have now. Um, and we have, um, a substantial amount of money to put towards, um, direct instruction. And so, uh, missing that, you know, a good portion of our money being spent on, um, you know, things that absolutely need to be updated and fixed, um, a- and, and that are important. Um, I, I think I just would love to hear, like, unpacking on our priorities, um, right now, um, and, and the rationale for that decision. Um, and I think it's important for everyone here, because I've, I've gotten calls and emails, like, what are we doing with this money? We have this, this is our time to think big and our time to ensure that our students and our teachers have the supports that they need. And so, um, you know, we, you don't have to give it to me now, but I would, you know, I think that deserves some unpacking.
Yes. Um, I will say with the, uh, classroom furniture, that is one of the items that we've actually, um, looked at and have been talking about possibly doing some other things with. Um, we, we did consider that, and I think we looked at classroom furniture because we saw so many requests for that from S R two from our schools, that we thought that we would factor that in here. But we have talked about that being one of those items that is flexible, um, in case other needs come up, that we can look at other uses of, of those funds. But we will provide an answer for you on the usage of these funds to address some of the, um, facility and maintenance building needs.
Um, and then, um, lastly, you mentioned some things that were not, um, uh, some things that you weren't able to spend the money on because of the criteria. Um, what were some of those things that were lifted up that you weren't able to do?
One of the main things had to do with food. There were a lot of, and I get why people were requesting it. I mean, they were trying to use these as incentivizers, um, for staff and for students. But that was in some of the plans and it was denied.
You said food?
Food. Student incentives.
Oh, okay.
And student incentives. Those were not allowable.
Ms. Cortez? All right, Ms. Wolsey?
I'm gonna try and knock some of them off my list. Um, so this is, this was great. The main, um, question I have is there's quite a number of efforts obviously focused on academic intervention. So I think this is what's gonna be the most difficult part of this whole thing. And I'm kind of looking over at Mr. Rand, which is at the end of all this pretty large amount of spend, what will we know really made a difference? You know, when we've got so many different efforts. And so, you know, a great example I'll give you is when you were going through, I forget which slide it was, but I immediately recognized, um, it was actually number one, part-time teachers providing extra tutoring. I know for a fact that that is how Dr. Howard has had, had made a huge, huge, um, academic gains in her building. So how, and I'm not asking to have this answered now, it's, it's really to Dr. Adele, Dr. Collier, and Mr. Rand over there. It's gonna be, I think, the most difficult thing, uh, you know, how do we tease out what is working and what's not? Because when it comes to the long-term, and you know, what, after Blueprint 2030s, then we want to make sure we're putting our dollars where they're going to have the biggest bang for the buck, and they're really going to do what we need to have done for our students. So that's my big question.
And, and just to answer some of that question, um, I think through the formative assessment process that we have in place, um, every single one of our schools have, uh, responsibilities to continue to formative assess their students. Um, and then at the end of, of, of those cycles of semesters, we get all of that data. So we have an idea. We'll, we'll easily be able to track and see what schools is, um, actually, this is working for, which schools aren't, and then why aren't they working? But at the end of it all, we, the, 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 the piece that will tell this board that what we did worked will be when our kids take that state assessment at the end of next year. I mean, it's, it's just that simple. If, as long as we're able to keep our kids in school and uh, more than having them out, you know, we truly believe that the, uh, proof will be in the pudding at the end of the year when our students are taking that state assessment and we can look and see how they look against other kids across the state, uh, uh, with our N C C, N C Es, our normal curve equivalencies look like against the state. So if we, if we've done this right, I mean, we should see significant value add um, in terms of academic, uh, achievement outcomes in our students. Um, and then I know we talk a lot about program evaluations, and that's something that we've been talking a lot in his division around. How do we make sure that we are able to evaluate the effectiveness? It's very similar to the first question that you asked earlier today about, you know, our, um, educational access content on that, on the, on the spot thirty-eight. So we're gonna take the same approach with this, and, and I believe that's also gonna be a requirement, um, around if we are audited, we have to be able to provide that data around, you know, how are we measuring impact? Um, and I think that's coming down the pipeline.
The only part I would add on to that is I, I know that, um, in my, in my old world of marketing, sales, I always want to spend my dollars where I know I'm gonna get the biggest lift. And so I want to make sure we're trying to, yes, my goal is, or hope is that you'll see the, um, results in those, uh, state standardized scores. But, but there's like this menu of things that we've done. What I'd really like is the ability to say, we knew these things moved it this much, and these only moved it this much. And we'd actually rather put our efforts into the ones that really bled.
Ms. Cortez for real this time?
So, uh, thank you. I, I wanna follow up though on Ms. Wolsey's question, which eliminated one off my list, but I still have a follow-up related to that. Which is, I, I, I really want to push back a little bit, which is as board member, what I don't want to hear two years from now is, we think this worked, and that's why we're gonna continue to invest in it. So whether it's interim, periodic evaluation, whether it's qualitative and quantitative feedback from the teachers, the building leaders, we need to be doing things and thinking about how we get ahead of that curve now, so that we have real, uh, visibility on the interventions that the people in the classrooms and the people in the school buildings believe were effective and kind of try to triangulate that with the, 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 the larger data set. Uh, otherwise, I think we're gonna be back to what we feel instead of what we know. So, um, so I do have a few questions, so I apologize. I tried to, I tried to let everybody go to see if they covered them. They didn't. Um, so I apologize. Um, sometimes I don't know what I, what I know it's mean. Um, so speaking of pivots, we talked about the need to be flexible.
Yes.
We're, we're going down the S R two into the S R three track, and we're coming down the Blueprint 2030 track. If there are pillars or components of Blueprint 2030 that, will we have the ability to reevaluate some of the S R three commitments in light of the Blueprint 2030 conclusions and recommendations, so that we can marry those up?
Absolutely. So, um, when S R three funding is gone, and I think that goes back to really measuring, um, which of these, um, supports are, have been most effective for us, then determining what it is that we want to continue, um, and factoring into, that into the Blueprint 2030 plan. And there are some things that we will probably determine, even over the course of these two years, that we are seeing that we're getting some great outputs from and that these are effective for us. And so we'll begin factoring those in. Um, for example, um, like when I talked about the building subs, I, when, when we first, um, thought about bringing those on, I didn't realize how important that was for our schools. I mean, we thought it was a great idea, but we have found that that has been really important because what it does, it, it allows the daily operations of the school to continue, um, where teach, uh, principals are not tied up trying to do a lot of other, other things, uh, aside from their most important role of being the instructional leader in the building. And so having, um, folks on the ground who are able to feel and support in any way that a principal needs, um, that has been invaluable for us. So as we look at that, um, how do we factor that into, um, Blueprint 2030? How do we increase those supports in our school possibly? So that's just one example. Um, but we would do the same with all of the other supports as well, determining what is it that we want to continue based on the outputs that we're seeing.
Cause I, I, I do foresee that there are gonna be some areas where we're gonna have to have that conversation before we get to the end of S R.
Yes.
Um, the second question I'll send by email.
Okay.
Something we can talk about separately. Um, the, s- so do, buried in all of the various pieces, uh, but I don't see it, so I feel like I should ask. Does S R two or S R three allow us to provide any supports for our teachers and staff with regard to their own well-being, their mental health, their stress levels? How can we do that? Are we doing that? Can you share a little bit with us about that?
That allowable usage? Um, I think that's valuable, and it actually aligns with our, some of our most recent conversations around where we feel our folks are even right now, um, how they're feeling in the buildings and, um, dealing with the anxiety and stress that, um, is just accompanying this period of time that we're in. I mean, it's, it's pretty widespread. And so, um, that's another, um, I, I think that's a great, so, um, suggestion and something we'll look at. Another place where we probably need to pivot and look at how we can do more, um, to support our staff.
Believe that's-
I appreciate that.
That's an important piece too, um, just so you know, as, as I've been going in and visiting schools and just asking teachers how things have been going. And I'm absolutely, uh, hearing that teachers are like, you know, this first month feels like I've been in school already a full semester. Um, we are having a meeting-
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. No agenda, uh, just with all of the building administrators, the building principals to, to, to just do a check-in. And then we're gonna, i- in that meeting, ask them to do the same with their staff. No agenda, just talk to your people and find out how they're doing, what supports are needed, what can we do? So, um, that got scheduled today.
Mm-hmm.
I think we just, we just, based on my visits, I've talked to her yesterday and said, we need to just do an emergency meeting just to check on people from a well-being standpoint. So that's, I mean, that's a great question. I think we'll get a lot more ideals from our teams, and they can do the same, working with their teachers around, you know, how do we help just with the social and emotional distress that everybody's dealing with right now?
Right. I mean, I think, I think it's, and, and instead of it being, you know, there, there may be a great opportunity out of that conversation to think about as a, a building-by-building approach as opposed to a, a top-down approach.
Mm-hmm.
The national data is consistent with your conversations, your experiences. I think, um, we just need to, we need to be mindful and make sure we're putting resources into supporting our, our team.
Yes, I agree.
And then, so I apologize. Um, one last question again, you don't necessarily have to answer it tonight, but in terms of our ability to track, not just track, um, increasing vaccination amongst our, both our, our, our teachers and staff and our students, but how far can we go with these resources in terms of, you know, kind of getting out of the traditional box of, let's send out a video, let's send out a, an email, and really get into more, um, uh, I'd say personalized strategies, but direct strategies so that we give people a resource, a trusted resource to to find, to, to, to manage their fears related to vaccination. And, and does, you know, can we do that with S R dollars?
I would think if it's, uh, addressing COVID nineteen-related issues, we can. Yes. Okay, Linda's saying we can educate, so, yes.
Cause I just, I mean, I think, again, if you look at other, uh, both the data and, and the things that other institutions are having to do to get creative
Mm-hmm.
around encouragement.
Yeah.
It's really, it's really less about encouragement now, and it's as much about kind of helping people wrestle with their fears.
Yes, I agree.
So I would encourage that.
I would offer there, we just learned last week that we had availability to six hundred thousand dollars of new money from the state coming through the nursing program, specifically around one of the conversations earlier about how do we encourage child immunization and other. So we got that, we got that application in. Jen, uh, Erin's team along with Lauren's team got that. So that six hundred thousand dollars is coming to us unplanned right now as to how we're gonna use it. But it's available specific, specifically around that kind of area. So we're continuing to see these little pop-up fund opportunities because that's being identified over and over again.
All right, I'll go to Dr. Jones for the last question. I'll, I'll hold mine and, and send an email. Or talk to you guys directly on, on my. Go ahead, Dr. Jones.
This was actually just a quick comment, and I was thinking about the conversation around kind of the split of our funding, uh, and, or your plans for how you'll spend the dollars. And it just, I was just thinking, I want us to focus on the instruction and things like that, and things that are gonna get the academic bang for the buck. But also, when I saw the things about the enhanced environment, I'm thinking about the things that have gone underfunded for decades and that we know contributes to things we don't see that impacts learning. So asthma, uh, flu, cold, RSV, all the stuff that circulates and makes people stay home, you know, throughout the, you know, from basically October to March, you know, that causes a lot of absenteeism and causes people to not be able to learn. So I see some of this as, it doesn't look like direct academic, um, impact, but from a public health perspective, it is a major impact on learning, so.
Yes.
And I, and I was gonna speak to that because I think, um, you know, wanted to get an idea also of like, what some other school districts are doing. I mean, I've heard a lot around people, um, making those investments in, in room air quality units, all of those kind of things. And we did, we talked about this as a team because, you know, Ms. Buckner, I ca- I agree where you're coming from. When you look at it, the appearance of it is, man, you know, spending a whole lot on, you know, doing some capital work. And we know that we, we have all of this work that needs to be done, um, academically. And we talked about it as a team, and I, and I did, I said, you know, my concern was well, if the air quality isn't where it needs to be, and then kids are getting sick, and we don't really know because of the way this virus operates, then we, we're gonna find ourselves not having kids in school in the first place. The question is, you know, it, it, it is about the balance, right? They told us twenty percent, we're spending twenty-eight percent. And, and the, the question is, even as we put this amount of money into instruction, the bigger issue that we have to address is the human capital piece. How do we make sure that we get the people in to help us? Because what we don't want to do is have this money at the end of twenty twenty-four be returned back because we didn't invest it in the human capital pieces that we said. And, and so it, it's tough, but we are gonna go back and look at it because I, I, I understand your, your position. I totally understand your position, um, totally.
Dr. Bidel, I'm not pushing back on the decision. I think one thing that we have to do better of as a district is unpacking these decisions publicly. Um, to ensure that, um, you know, our stakeholders trust us. And so when we see forty-plus million being spent on what says, um, enhancing instructional environment in buildings, that just needs unpacking, right? And I think we just need to do a better job of that. So that's why I just ask that we have that.
That is.
All right. I guess, uh, you're staying up there, huh, Dr. Collier?
Yes, I am.
So let me just start off with this piece. Um, you know, we have a couple of big dates ahead of us. Um, October sixth, where we will begin to engage the board, uh, with some of the scenario discussions. October thirteenth is, uh, a date that I think will be very critical in us just making sure that we are, are very crystal clear with our community. Ms. Buckner, you know, talked about how do we make sure, just to, to your point right now, that we're crystal clear with people in unpacking what all of this means. Blueprint 2030 is more than just a five-year strategic plan process. It is more than a ten-year facilities assessment plan with the work that we're gonna do over the next ten years. It is about us addressing what we've learned from the ed landscape and the system analysis work that we've done over the last several years. And being able to ultimately, and I'll say this again in front of media over the next couple of weeks, but we have to look at our system and the way that it's currently configured, and we have to make sure that we can give our students the experiences that they deserve that are aligned to what their peers are getting, or even supersedes what their peers are getting in surrounding school districts. So what that means is that while we are very inefficient as a system, there are things that we can control inside of this system. So, what that means is that while we are very inefficient as a system, there are things that we can control inside of this system to ensure that we are no longer inefficient. And that is gonna require that we have to have a deep conversation around school closures, consolidations, co-locations, whatever it takes to get these facilities maximized so that we can make sure that the resources that we have, which are often limited, that they go much further than they're going right now. And that is going to require a lot of community engagement. It's gonna require some pain because everybody's not going to be happy with what we're having to do here. But for the greater good of this system and the greater good of the kids that we have to serve, we have to have these difficult conversations if we really want to be a district that's sustainable in our practices to develop students socially, emotionally, and academically. So, part of what you're going to hear today is just some of the beginning of these conversations as we think about our middle school and where we at with our middle school experiences. You're gonna hear about some of the surveys and some of the data we have and some of the conversations that we're gonna begin to push out into the community. And then you're also gonna get a better understanding of some of the facility assessment around what we look like, um, with our middle schools. Those are gonna be the two blueprint twenty thirty updates tonight. So, we'll pass it over to Dr. Collier.
Okay, I'm up again and I'll be joined later in the, in this presentation with, um, by Crystal Thomas. Um, she's our new assistant superintendent of school leadership and I just wanna say that, um, she has really done an amazing jobs and she's come on and particularly around, um, just engaging a various number of stakeholders across the system. And one of those groups was actually, um, our mo- middle school experience group. Um, she has led that committee in discussions around configuration of our middle schools. And so, this next slide here shows you this initial group, um, that was, has been a part of that, this process. I do wanna emphasize again that this, this is just the beginning stages. We do not intend for this group to make all the decisions around middle school configuration. This is just the beginning of our thinking and dreaming about what our middle school, um, should look like and what the experiences should be. Um, and so, these are some of the folks they are, um, consist of, uh, district office leaders as well as principals. And then we have had a couple of visits from teachers, um, to share, um, their thinking around what experiences should be. So, the context for our KCPS middle schools, um, middle school conversations are not new in KCPS. We have been talking about these configurations for a very long time and as you all know, um, we have a variety of configurations in KCPS. We have, um, K eight, um, we have six eight, we have seven eight, we have seven twelve. And so, we're looking at opportunities to have some alignment across our system as we began to engage in this blueprint twenty thirty work. And we're looking at this now because blueprint twen- twenty thirty provides us a, a great opportunity, um, to consider what is best for our students. And once again, it's not us just determining what is best. It is, is going to be vital that we engage a number of stakeholder students. We think it's important that students have a voice and a little bit later you'll see, um, some of the engagement we've already done with our students, with our parents, with our teachers, our principals, even the larger community, um, engaging around, um, as we accomplish, uh, the things that we're wanting to do in blueprint twenty thirty, what should our middle schools look like? And as we have started this work, everything that we're doing and thinking about is through the lens of student experience. You know, what is it that our students should be experiencing? So, not focusing on, um, what we're comfortable with or what we've done before, um, or what we think, but it's about student experience, what is best for our students and that will be done by engaging research. Also, um, engagement with, uh, community and, um, various stakeholders. And so, this allows some innovative approaches, um, to this work as we begin to examine how this will fit into this larger blueprint twenty thirty vision. So, here's a little bit of history about KCPS and we start with two thousand and ten, but I just wanna mention that even before two thousand and ten, um, the gray configurations were, it was K eight, it was K eight. And then in two thousand and ten, through KCPS rightsizing, um, twenty-one schools closed. I'm, I'm sure everyone in the community was aware, it was a huge deal, it was all in the paper, people knew about these, uh, this massive closures that happened here in KCPS. And middle schools went away altogether, traditional middle schools did. And then we had, what, we had seven through twelfth grade buildings. I was actually an assistant principal at Northeast High School when we had the seven through twelve buildings. And so, you will see in August twenty fourteen that we shifted away and there was a reason. Uh, it did not work well. And I will say part of the reason why the seven twelve did not work well at the time, I think it, it was lack of, of really planning around dedicated space, the facilities didn't really, um, serve, uh, the middle school students well. It was just packing them into a building that had previously been, had been accommodating nine through twelve. And so, I don't believe that it best served and met the needs of those middle school age students. And I think the district quickly discovered that, we shifted away. And in twenty fourteen, we opened Northeast Middle and Central Middle, serving those seventh and eighth grade students. At the time though, the conversation was possibly making middle schools six through eight, but I think facility-wise, it was, it was easier for us to just shift our seventh and eighth grade students into our middle school buildings. And so, that's, that's how we came, came to Northeast Middle and Central Middle. Then of fall twenty fifteen, that Lincoln Middle Advisory Committee, um, formed to start exploring possibly the reopening of Lincoln Middle School. And then through the KC Master Plan work, um, it was determined that there was a need for Lincoln Middle, um, Advisory Committee to reconvene and continue working and then also considering a South Middle School. There were conversations around, around that as well. Then in twenty seventeen, the South Middle Steering Committee began meeting, um, talking about what that particular middle school would look like. And then twenty eighteen is when KCPS Strategic Plan initiated and we reaffirmed that exploration of Lincoln Middle School expansion. And then twenty nineteen, we actually opened Lincoln Middle School as a six eight building. And there were lots of conversations at that time around what would, uh, best meet the needs of students. And it was determined that six through eight was the model that we would go with, um, for Lincoln Middle. And then here we are now in our blueprint twenty thirty planning process, looking and, and trying to determine based on where we're going to be, um, not just in ten years, five years, um, what is the best configuration for our middle school students? What configuration will best meet their needs and best serve them? Because we don't want them to be an afterthought, um, in this process. Here's what some of our surrounding districts look like. You'll see that the majority of our peers, our neighboring school districts, um, have the six through eight middle model. Um, however, there are a few outliers there, North Kansas City and Independence with a sixth grade center and then they have seventh and eighth, uh, middles as well. Shawnee Mission and Lee Summit has gone with seventh and eighth grade middles. And then you can see what a couple of our charters have done Kaufman five eight and then Crossroads seven twelve. So, our framework for how we're thinking about middle schools, how are we approaching this work? As I mentioned, we're really just at a stage where we're imagining and dreaming, um, and really dreaming about what would we like for our middle schools to look like? What do we hope to achieve there? Um, and not just academically, but even socially and developmentally for our students. What are the experiences that we would want them to have, um, um, in a, an ideal middle school? What will the facilities look like? We don't wanna repeat of what happened when we moved them into the high schools. And in many cases, they didn't really have dedicated spaces. They just kinda had to get in where they fit in. And that's really what it felt like at that time, um, uh, in terms of, uh, addressing middle school needs. Um, it was, it, as I said before, it wasn't the best experience for our students and so, we don't want to repeat that. So, we need to think about what do our facilities need to actually look like, um, in order to, um, accommodate the, the types of student experiences that we want for our children. And then we've talked a lot about the elective experience because we know that, um, that experience is really important. You guys have heard me talk and I'm not gonna get on my soapbox tonight, but, um, those are the types of, uh, that, that's the type of learning in those subjects, the fine arts, the world language, um, dance and, and other things. Those are things that kids enjoy. Um, it, it draws them to school. It also addresses some social emotional because many kids find their niche or their place of belonging in some of those types of areas. And if we, we, if we're not providing that for our children, we're missing the mark in some places for, for kids who really could benefit from having access to a wide variety of electives. Um, and then also considering as we look at the student experience and we build it out, what will our staffing needs be? Um, because likely it will be greater than what they are now, so we have to consider that and then how we would plan to accommodate for those staffing needs. And then once again, looking at fine arts programming, we've had lots of conversation around that, really believing that our children need to have access to those opportunities. They need access to world language. And then thinking about where do we start this? Do we start it at elementary, middle, high? These are all conversations we're having now, but these are also the conversations that we plan to engage our larger community in as we collectively build out what that middle school experience and configuration will be. So, what does the research say? Um, there's lots of research out there. Overall, it's pretty inconclusive in terms of lean- leaning one way or another. Um, you can find some, some articles and research that leans one way or another, but, um, is, there's nothing overwhelming in terms of, uh, the research around that, in terms of what is a best, uh, configuration. Um, however, we do, we have looked at some research and we have some thoughts in mind around options that we may wanna consider, considering our student experiences. Um, and once again, those, all that information will be shared with the larger community as well. Um, also looking at research around student achievement, what will help us best meet the student learning needs of our students? This initial work revolved around the six through eight grade, eighth grade middle school configuration. However, we're open to looking at others as well and we have. Um, and then with this, we've also conducted initial SWOT analysis and so, we thought it was important to look at, what is it that we're currently offering? What does our current middle school experience look like? Is it meeting the needs of our students? And then what are the, the gaps? What are the things that we, we're not currently doing that we need to do? And Ms. Thomas, um, as I stated before, she led the team through this entire process and so, she's gonna come up in just a moment, um, to share a little bit about the findings and learnings from that SWOT analysis. But here is some of the engagement that we've done so far. And once again, this is just the initial stages, but we started engaging back in the spring. I'm not sure if you remember, um, we did lunch meetings with every school in our district. We went out to visit every building and over the lunch period, we provided lunch and staff members came in and gave us their feedback, um, at that time around a number of topics, um, related to blueprint twenty thirty, but then they also completed surveys for us. One of the groups that we surveyed was our student group and you can see the things that they prioritize, what was important to them. If you'll notice, number three is that six through eighth grade middle model. They are really interested in that. Um, and then also you can see that that's mirrored when you look over at the staff feedback. So, that was pretty high up on the, um, in terms of priorities and, and things that, that our staff and our students would like to see, which is why we kinda started looking closer at that six through eighth grade based on the feedback that we received from students and staff. So, how does this fit into, um, our blueprint twenty thirty vision? Um, we're really trying to focus on how do we best prepare our students for college and career, um, as we move forward? What are the things that we would like to see and how can we do that better than what we're doing today? Also, looking at our facilities, we do wanna be cost efficient, but we also want to make sure that, that our buildings and facilities help us to accomplish, um, these goals that we have for our middle school students. And then also just continuing to explore the various configurations and considering the, the u- unique needs of this particular age group. Anybody who's ever been an educator knows that middle schoolers, um, are a very unique group and it takes a unique staff, um, to work with them. I mean, they're, they are a great group, but they are different than your elementary and your high school. And so, we, and once again, we don't want them to be an afterthought. We really wanna think through what does that ex- should that experience be for them? So, at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Thomas to talk a little bit about the SWOT analysis.
Good evening. I'm excited to talk to you tonight about the exploratory work that we've been doing. Again, we pulled together a small group of principals and, and district teams and a couple of teachers. Um, and we really tried to think about what are some of the things that we currently have through our SWOT analysis and where do we wanna go? Um, but again, we have a lot of work to do around engagement and continuing that work. So, some of the strengths that the committee outlined was that most schools already have middle school teams and professional learning communities that would be able to help, um, support the academic progress of our students. One of the things that they highlighted as like a big win and a huge strength for us is that the state of Missouri already requires teacher certifications in grades five through nine. So, that transition from six through, if we went to a six through eight configuration, there would be a smooth transition there. In terms of the weaknesses, the committee identified potential challenges. So, we tend to lose our students in fifth grade to charter schools. Uh, the district will need to ensure that facilities can support innovative middle school programming that will be recommended by our stakeholders, uh, through surveys. And one of the things that was highlighted especially by our principals is that we would like to expand our English language learner programming across the district. Right now, it's concentrated at one school. We want to be the choice for KCPS families by ensuring that students participate in expanded course offerings. And so, this is when our opportunities component of our SWOT analysis came to fruition. And we started just talking about, you know, what could that be? So, choir, band, project lead the way, um, different courses like that to make sure our students had an expanded experience. Uh, middle school students also need age-appropriate social and emotional supports and we want to create an environment for our students to thrive. So, those are some of the, the, uh, identified opportunities. In terms of our threats, we just need to be aware that students are being recruited by other schools within the KCPS metro. Uh, there is concern, okay, there is concern that there may be a lack of financial resources to support the middle school experience. The research indicates that there are several factors that should be considered when thinking about which be- which, uh, grade configu- configuration, excuse me, is best. Um, so, student achievement, strengths and weaknesses around our high-stake assessments, the number of transitions and students affected, the flexibility of a school building to accommodate diverse ages and the developmental needs of students. Research also says that we should look at student enrollment by grade level and by building, looking at our current and lo- wrong, long-term projections as well as teacher, uh, staff training, certification for new grades that are coming into buildings. They also noted some benefits to our students and families. So, those expanded course offerings, the project lead the way, world languages, fine arts, Avid. Um, and Avid, um, really was one of the things that they wanted to focus on in terms of really preparing our students for college. They also suggested, the committee did, that some of the benefits would be expanded, uh, PE offerings to include dance, weight training, aerobics, martial arts, and really honing in on our student skills and talents. And then having expanded course offen- offerings, post-secondary experiences, clubs, um, athletics, teams. The committee made, the committee made, uh, initial recommendations. Again, we have a lot of engagement work to still continue. We've done some and we wanna continue, uh, for the six through eighth model. Uh, it aligns nicely with our roadmap for, uh, student growth and success in pillars A and B. Um, one of the things that they really wanted to focus on too was the service learning opportunities that students got during the summer. Uh, they, they said students love them and they wanted to continue it during the school year. And to make sure that our students in the middle school got college and career opportunities. For example, job shadowing, college tours, um, and of course, uh, extracurricular activities as well. So, traditionally, our traditional middle schools right now, the Missouri learning standards are configured in six through eight. So, if that was the model selected, um, that's already done in terms of our standards. Uh, many schools across the state already offer world languages and fine arts offerings, um, clubs and, and organized team sports. And right now, um, we're departmentalized and curve where we are now in terms of our elementary and middle schools. Um, we're departmentalized in the middle school, but at the elementary school, not all buildings are. And the certifications are general certifications for elementary school. And so, um, we would need more content-based certify, or core area certified teachers for departmentalized in the middle schools. Um, world languages are not currently available, um, and there's limited access to fine arts. And there is, right now, we don't have clubs and organized team sports in our middle schools. So, our proposed plan is to have those content-certified core teachers having a dedicated time for those- for those courses to be taught every day, dedicated instructional periods for world language and fine arts. And the benefit would be they'd have three years to develop their world language and fine art skills. Students would be able to participate in team sports and clubs and after-school programs. That concludes our work.
Yeah, I just want to make a correction for the record. One of the things you said was clubs and like organized team sports wasn't available in our middle schools, and I think you meant the elementary schools that have sixth graders in it.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. And Dr. Collier, I'll open it up for questions.
This was great. Love this part of what we're doing. So, I just wanted to make a comment. It's slide sixty-one. I don't know if that helps, but just around how we're thinking about middle school, I would encourage us to, I think you're doing all the right things. I think one of the things we tend to forget, although you mentioned it, we tend to think like educators. So, we're always thinking about this through an educator lens because that's how you're mostly trained. Think like, think like business people, think like marketers, because I think what we have to remember is, who, so we've surveyed the teachers, we've surveyed the students for feedback. My question always goes to, who is making the decision about where a child will go in middle school? And when does that decision take place? And how can you get to those pieces of information? Because you need those pieces of information. I'm a middle school, I was recently a middle school parent, and what I realized in, you know, this is no shock, I really wanted my child to go the neighborhood school route, my second child. And so, but I lost that battle because after, like, you have a parent trying to make a decision and a student trying to make a decision for the next steps. And I think we need to understand what's important to students, very much so, but also to parents, because in a lot of cases, parents are driving that decision. And the question there is, and I think you kind of hit upon it, is, when are they making that decision? They're making that decision third and fourth grade, believe it or not, and they're moving their kid at third and fourth grade. So, just keeping that in mind when we're thinking about that. And then, what does the research say? I think, you know, right here, how can we, oh. When we're thinking about what the research says, always just think about, how do we, yes, we want to make sure this is the best experience for our students first, but what can put Kansas City Public Schools in a more competitive position to get these students to stay with us or to come back? So, those are just two pieces. No need to respond, it was great.
Mr. Barker?
Great presentation. I wanted to really talk to the public about the importance of Blueprint 2030 and their direct engagement in this process as early on as possible, right? Because as Dr. Bedell mentioned before, we're talking about potential closures, we're talking about consolidations, and people are going to come at us later and act like they didn't know, and this is the point where we're saying, get involved right now, be a part of the decisions we're making, because it is going to be challenging for us to make these decisions as a board, and we'll do that later on in the process, but we're asking for public engagement now.
Ms. Ford?
Yes, thinking about the piece that was referenced earlier in the presentation by you, Dr. Collier, in reference to 2010, is there anything that we can say to the public as we start thinking about these scenarios? People who still are, were around for 2010, that we can give them as a way that this process, as we begin to start having these conversations, is going to look and feel different? So what is our response and our reaction to people who are still in base?
Yes, and public perception is critical, is very important, and I think it goes back to the engagement piece that Mr. Barker's talking about. We have to engage people early, they have to know and feel that they're a part of this planning, part of designing this, and have some buy-in. I can tell you, in 2010, there probably was some engagement, but it was, I don't remember there being a lot even as a staff member in terms of deciding what that configuration was going to be. We were just kind of told, and that's what we did. And I'm sure that that could probably cause us to lose a lot of trust from our community, and probably even some staff members, because it was a very challenging experience to try to manage that seven through twelve without, in my opinion, adequate planning and involvement. And so I think as we engage people, we have to make sure that folks, all of our stakeholder groups, that we're not missing any, that they're a part of these conversations and helping us build this out. That's why I was emphasizing that this is not final, this is very fluid. We're still at the imagining and dreaming stage, but we're going to need everyone in the community to really help us build this out, so it is actually what our community wants, what they're looking for, and we're meeting the needs of our students. And I think if we do that well, that will help us. And there'll probably still be some public perception that we still have to continue to work on, but if we engage well, we help to address some of those issues.
And Ms. Ford, that's a great question. That's why I was just telling Mr. Hogan, I said, yeah, I couldn't have answered that one because I wasn't here, so I'm happy you're on our team. But I have had several board members, you know, to just say, you know, listen, lessons learned, like I lived through what happened back in 2010, and the sooner that you all can just be very transparent with the board and this community, that's going to dictate how far we're going to be able to go, right? And we have to go far enough so that whether I'm here in five years, or folks are here, or whether there are board members still on this board in five years, we don't want people to have to go through this again, no time soon. So we have to engage people properly, we have to apply an equity lens, not only in how we service our schools, but how we service the community as a whole within our boundaries. And we have to make sure that as we are out in these communities, we're being very transparent around what does these changes and the experiences that we want to see happen for our students, our families, and this community, how does everybody feel that they actually are going to be a vested part of where we're going with this Blueprint 2030 work? So, a lot of lessons learned. I know Shanissa was here, we brought her in on Monday, she's going to be a huge value add to help us make sure that even as we are going through these updates with you all, that we're trying to avoid potential pitfalls, and the more transparent we can be, the better off we're going to be here. So we totally agree.
Yeah, and I think the equity lens piece is really important because I know there are families where their current model, which is not sixth through eight, and it is working for them. And so, I just want to make sure that we are considering the equity, and maybe the blanket approach may not necessarily be the best for everyone.
And I think that's something that will emerge from a really thorough engagement process. And that's the thing, we want to stay open to that, to really hearing and knowing, and not just, you know, deciding now. We're not deciding now, but we have to, you know, engage thoroughly so we can get that feedback and really understand which direction we need to go when we bring a recommendation to you, the board.
Dr. Jones? Go ahead, Dr. Bedell.
Can I say one more thing? Because I think this will be a piece that will come up. You know, the thing that I do have fear of is, people think that we already know what we're doing, right? But I also know that part of our work as an administrative team is, we have to also present ideals to the community, right? So people may think, well, oh, you're presenting this to us because you already know what you're going to do. No, the scenarios are just that, they're scenarios, they have to be presented, these are things that we have to take a look at, and then as we engage the community, we'll get much closer to doing, making the decisions we have to make. But nothing is baked, and that's just the bottom line. So we'll take this to our community, and we'll do everything that we can to engage at the highest of levels to make sure we're making the best decisions.
Dr. Jones?
Just really briefly, and this can be in an update if you're not sure now, but I'm just curious as to what extent we are able to incorporate some of the city planning and development that's happening and being planned over the next, you know, several years. So, I just happened to find out about a bunch of like low-to-moderate income homes that were being built and apartments right now in the Rogers area, for example, and just wondering, to what extent do we incorporate things like that into our decisions about these buildings?
That's why we do engagement. That's all, that's all I can give you. Yeah, I mean, it's a great thought, and it's something that, you know, Shannon is a big part of knowing all of these projects, and you know, she's one of our chief leaders over this whole Blueprint 2030 component. So, I mean, this is why we do the updates, because these are things that we're just not going to catch everything and think about everything. So these are ideals that we will bring back to the team and talk through on, but thank you.
Ms. Buckner?
Sorry. I do, to your point, Dr. Bedell, on being totally transparent, early, I think the unpacking of this was really effective because you took us through the history, and I think that is going to be so important as we engage in this process. So the more that we can do that, tell folks like how we even got here in the first place, that will ensure that this lands the way it needs to land. That's all I want to say.
Here, here. All right, I think we are good, thank you.
All right, Lynda, you're up.
All right, we're moving along, everybody. This is good stuff, though. He says sort of. Okay, so we are moving into our KCPS middle school facility assessment update, and we'll have Ms. Quinley to take us through that.
Thank you for letting me come up again. I'm going to have just a very few slides on this. We've had a lot of slides for you tonight, looks like seventy-three already, according to this number. But a little history and context here on the facility component around this. Many of you are aware that there was a study completed by MGT in 2015. It was a little bit of a different facility study than we're doing now, but what was learned at the time was across the system, we had an estimated $400 million of deferred maintenance across the district, largely relating to the fact that we've not had geobonds to address these things. And there's an estimated fifty to sixty million that we've invested since via operating debts that this board and previous boards have authorized, transfers from operating balances to capital projects to work on things. So we've been whittling away at that 400 million. The 40 million we just talked about earlier during the ESAR would continue to do that as well. And what we know is there's not been any long-term planning around this, and that is a component of our Blueprint 2030 work. So we really want to be intentional about what does a long-term plan look like for facility cost management. Really important, a part of that fifty to sixty million dollars was, all three of the current middle schools were recently renovated during, with those resources, and since 2015 as a part of their reopening. Current status, as you know, our architect of record, ACI Boland, is preparing a full assessment for us. And what I like about this assessment, there are lots of things, so I won't talk about all of it, but some of the things I really like is that it's an assessment by building, and it's an assessment by system. So if we wanted to go out and say, we want to address the envelope of our buildings before we do any more pretty work inside, what might it look like if we issued an RFP for all the roofs? And we got the roofs on a cycle and those kinds of things? So we're going to have the ability to say, what does it take to get this building fully ready? Or what does it take to get this system fully ready? It is going to include an educational adequacy study as well, which means, what do our buildings not have today that they need in order to meet today's learning environments and expectations? It's going to include capacity and utilization, and then allow us to do some of that long-term planning that I mentioned has not been a part of our past. Here's a little bit of capacity data for our current middle schools, Central Middle, Lincoln Middle, and Northeast. This is at eighty-five percent, so we try to target, we want to be at eighty-five percent. That allows you to have some flex space, but sometimes we have buildings that are over, which you can see currently, Lincoln Middle is. But collectively, we have capacity of twenty-two hundred and fifty-five students, and at the eighty-five percent mark, our enrollment is fifteen hundred and seventy-six. So we've got room in there, but a question is, if we went to six, eight, would we have enough room? And we think the answer to that is probably not. I updated this slide, and it didn't hold, so I'm going to read you some numbers. My bad. No. On the sheet where I wrote them down. And now I'm going to need my glasses. Yes, that's exactly what it is. So, you guys, this board has had some exposure to these studies. You've seen the capacity study data, we looked at some elementaries and some condition scores. Our middle schools rank in the highest of our current condition scores. Central Middle's score, where you have four red X's, should say seventy-four percent. Lincoln Middle, seventy-two percent, and Northeast Middle, seventy-two percent. So that collectively, you can see, they are really close to that eighty percent target that we want to get, and that's because of the fairly recent investment that's been made in those buildings. We've identified one future possible site, which is the current Southwest High School. Its condition score is fifty-six percent. It's been vacant, hasn't been provided the kinds of efforts that some of our other schools had, so we expected that to be a much lower school. We're just looking at it as an example or possibility of if we needed a fourth site, what facility do we own today that might work for that? So the cost to get to that eighty percent mark, we don't have very far to go, right? Because we're at seventy-four, seventy-two, and seventy-two. The cost for Central Middle is three point three million dollars, and we will update these on the permanent slide deck, so they're out there. Lincoln Middle, three million. Northeast Middle, four point four million. And Southwest High School would need about twenty million, because again, it's not had the attention that the others have had. So collectively, if that were a path we went, adding a fourth school, using that building, and bringing them all up to eighty percent, we're looking at thirty point seven million dollars. Now, one thing that's really important about that is this doesn't address that educational space need that I talked about, and that Dr. Collier talked about, and Ms. Thomas talked about, to make sure we're having the opportunities inside the building that we want for today's learning. So this is just about getting the roofs tight, getting the systems working, those kinds of things. So there would be additional cost, and this wouldn't be a total dollar limit. Interestingly, when we look at the study by system, we're going to find that even at our middle schools where we've done work and we have the highest scores across the district, the largest needs are in the envelope of the building, which is your roof, your tuck pointing, your windows, your doors, those exteriors, which theoretically, if you are planning, you do that first, right? You get it secure on the outside before you start working on the inside. That's not necessarily our current situation. So future planning as it relates to facilities and the work around studying what the middle school model should look like. We'll use those final grade configuration decisions, of course, to derive the planning work. Target a fourth middle school if we went this route. Consider those educational learning spaces that I talked about, and then consider additional athletic space needs for onsite practice and competition if you add another grade level to there. How do we make sure we meet that? Central Middle and Northeast both have access to high school fields, but they need gym space. They don't really have an opportunity to give their kids the appropriate practice and competition time for indoor sports. And then, of course, engage the community around the needs and desires for facility enhancements based on those middle school decisions first. So timelines, we are just days away from having the full utilization and educational adequacy work, so we're excited to be bringing that to you very soon, and then hoping that as early as January 2020, we would be able to make recommendations relating to the facility components that say what kind of work would be needed for creating the educational learning environment we want, as well as some long-term financial planning to support that.
Thank you, Ms. Quinley. Any questions from the board? Mr. Barker?
Just one comment and an idea to my colleagues, I guess. This is an opportunity, I feel like, to focus on environmental sustainability in our classrooms, in our buildings, efficiency at highest ends possible here. And what I'm asking of my colleagues, potentially to consider a policy that we implement that would go towards the future of this, and make sure that we continue to maintain that. And I'm not talking about missing recycle bins in this room, which we are, I'm talking about making sure that every light is LED to the highest max, so that we're not spending more money on utilities, so that we can put that money into our classrooms. So, just putting that out there.
That's such a great point. That's such a great point, um, not just in making sure you do the facility right, but getting to that point where you are managing operating costs year over year. And we find some buildings where we are in that situation and many where our operating costs are much, much higher per pupil and per square foot because we don't have the systems in place everywhere.
Ms. Wolfsey?
Um, I know this is a plan for us, but I cannot help but keep wearing my competitive hat right now. And I'm, I, I know, 'cause I drive by it every day, that Hogan's getting ready to get a nice new facility. And I just am curious, what are competitions, middle school facilities? Like, the, as you say, the envelope, so that's the curb appeal, right? And then the inside and how we will compete. I mean, I know that's not a part of your assessment here, but those are things that I, I'm aware of because if we don't stay, people make decisions based on that, whether we like it or not. I don't care if we are, scores are all the way up here. If they have a better this, they may end up at that school.
Yeah, we're actually working on, um, scheduling some tours. Our architect is lining up some tours so that we can see some of the newer builds within our communities. I guess it's important to have that visually as you plan these things.
Okay, I think we're good, thank you, Ms. Quinley.
All right, um, Mr. Chair, before we, uh, close out my, I have one comment I need to make. Uh, let me just get back to my agenda. Sorry.
All right.
And that is... Okay, so I just wanted to, um, I mean, maybe I'm, I may be stealing your thunder here, Mr. Chair, but I wanted to just acknowledge, uh, Dr. Marvia Jones. I know she was recognized for Forty Under Forty in Public Health. And, uh, that's a huge, huge accomplishment. Um, so we, I just, as a team, wanted to congratulate you on, on that recognition. And that would conclude the superintendent's report.
So, not cool at all? You absolutely stole my thunder. You absolutely stole my thunder. I literally have it right here, yeah. No. I, but I'll give more details. It came from the, uh, Beaumont Foundation, and it was across the entire country, so Forty Under Forty. And, and we, look, we know how under, how woefully, woefully underfunded public health has been in this country forever, right? And so hopefully, this sort of recognition, and sadly, the pandemic and almost seven-hundred thousand lives lost in this country alone, will start, start to really sort of raise awareness around the, the ridiculous, um, and pathetic state of our public health infrastructure. And so, thank you for pouring yourself into this work, Dr. Jones. Um, you're, you're a consummate professional, and the work that you're doing every single day is literally saving lives, so thank you. Um, and then I just had, uh, well, we'll go, we'll do a couple items and I have one other sort of, uh, comments to make. But, June, can you review action items, um, from the, uh, well, the current list that we have?
The current list of outstanding action items. One was, the Board of Directors would like a map to visualize which student mentoring programs are where. And you received that map. This is on your desk, everyone has a copy of it. I'm sorry, ladies and gentlemen, I will make sure you get a copy. Um, and this map is posted in Symbly, so feel free to go to the Agenda Item page, and you can find the map there. Um, the other set of items were questions, um, that Mr. Gordon provided and Dr. Collier regarding some data, um, that was sent to you last week in your Friday packet. That data, um, those spreadsheets are also po- posted on the agenda.
Was data related to what, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, yes, thank you. The demographics of teachers of color and data on how teachers of color were retained. What is the percentage of new teachers in each building? And, um, the new to the profession? How are teachers doing in the buildings? So, there's, was a request for the performance rubric, which is, has also been provided. And then, um, uh, wants to see a plan in the, oh, the contingency plan. Okay, in, in the event of student staff absences, that has also been provided. And these are all posted in Symbly, um, on the page, and you can access them at any time.
Great. Thank you, June. And now, I'll turn it over to our Board Treasurer for the Board Treasurer's report.
All right. This is the best time, so I don't know why Dr. Bedell's leaving me. Um, all right, so, wanted to, um, thank Lynda and team for getting everything together on this. Not that much fun right now, unfortunately. Um, we are at seventy percent of the fiscal year, uh, but you will not see revenues, uh, or expenditures there due to cash flow and our accrual accounting method. Um, so we're just at the beginning here, um, of everything. So, as we look at our local, sorry, local side, um, as we look at our local sides, you'll see that on the right-hand column, and there's a percentage there, um, you're, you should be able to match about seventy percent for most of these funds, uh, unless they are revenues coming in, uh, but our expenditures, uh, will catch up. So, looking at Slide Four, our local revenues, uh, are only at point-one percent, or a hundred-and-twelve-thousand dollars in these first two months. Um, and again, it's just the way that we account for everything here. We'll get our large lump sums and, and things will start to, um, adjust as needed. Um, looking at our, our total revenue is only at point-three percent. Sorry, we're flying pretty fast.
Aye.
I'm trying to make it for Nate's lost time. Um, so again, these are pie charts, we normally see these. Local revenues gonna come in from our property taxes, please pay your property taxes on time. Commercial businesses, please pay yours at all. Um, all right, so here we are now. Um, so our expenditures here, um, total expenditures year-to-date are nineteen-point-three million, or six-point-four percent of the budget compared to the hundred-and-twelve-thousand in revenues to date. Uh, salaries and benefits. I think we're, I know it's in our slides, might be out of order here a little bit, so sorry to have you guys jumping around. Um, salaries and benefits are fifty-three percent of the total budget, but only seven percent of the budget year, day, uh, year-to-date due to the fact that most of the July's expenses were accrued back into last year. Uh, our total expenditures year-to-date are nineteen-point-three million, or six-point-four percent of the budget compared to a hundred-and-twenty, a hundred-and-twelve-thousand. Salaries and benefits are the largest part of our budget, it's sixty-three percent. So, as we look at the bu- the pie chart, pretty common for us to see, um, those is the largest expenses. Our maturities that align to pay dates run through November as we begin receiving our revenues from property taxes in December. Again, large chunks of money come in from our property taxes. Uh, we are, uh, heavy on cash flow at that point. We make these investments to cover our offsets when we're not receiving the large chunks of money, uh, outside of the normal collection process. So, hopefully that was fast enough for you.
That was great. Any questions for Mr. Barca? Thank you, sir, appreciate it. And we'll move right along to, uh, just a quick item for Board Chair Report, which is less of a report and more of a comment. I just wanted to, um, recognize, uh, Dr. Bedell, uh, Ms. Heil, her entire team, you know, with the opening of the International Welcome Center last week, right? Um, last week, it wa- it was incredible. I know it's been six-plus years in the making, um, and it's required a lot of resp- um, a lot of support from a whole variety of people. But for our new Americans that are coming into this country and need that additional support, and need people who speak their language, understand their culture, and are wrapping themselves around these kids, it's incredible. Um, I mean, I think kids are flowing in already from other schools that, that need that additional support and want to, um, to have that sense of belonging. So, thank you for, for Dr. Bedell coming in and continuing to sort of push that forward. Um, and again, thank you for, um, to Ms. Heil and, and her entire team for that effort. I'm excited to see it grow. I think it's going to give us another competitive advantage, um, in this city as well. And so, I'm excited to see the enrollment grow as a result of that. So, I just wanted to recognize you and the team for that, yeah. Um, all right, so we'll move on to ad hoc committee reports. And so, I will, I'm not exactly, I know that Ms. Wolfsey has a report, so, um, who would like to go first? Ms. Buckner?
I'll go first. Um, I just wanted to give an update from the board representation at the DAC meeting, um, and just name some opportunities that I see for the board. Uh, I attended, I was the, the board representation, and, um, we heard from, uh, Kelly Waichel, um, on Blueprint 2030 and, uh, the upcoming efforts to have a more, um, large-scale outreach for input. And, um, we heard from Angie Lyle, and she is the Chair, um, of DAC. And she named, uh, the different committees and the task force, one of which was Blueprint 2030 Task Force. And so, my hope i- is that not only can we communicate with this task force, this DAC task force, but also potentially collaborate from the CCE level or whole board level. I think there's tremendous opportunity there, and so I will be leaning in with, uh, Ms. Lyle on that soon. Uh, the next DAC meeting, I just heard this information, but it's November tenth and not November seventeenth, and Dr. Jones is set to attend the November meeting. And so, just let me know if there's any conflict with you being able to attend, and if you cannot, I will.
Thank you, Ms. Buckner. Ms. Wolfsey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, um, I'm pleased to, I'm gonna take a few minutes to provide, um, an update. It is that time of the year that we bring forward the Government Relations Committee, the State Legislative Priorities in a draft form. And so, for my board colleagues in your packets, you should have a twenty-twenty-two and the big draft on there. Um, so what we're doing tonight is, I'll go through these. Um, the way this works, uh, the committee itself talks about these. We recommend that these would be the ones that we would consider for this, um, State Legislative Session, which will begin, I believe it is January fifth, and run, just for those listening, um, through May thirteenth, that's the last day of session. And, um, we bring them forward in a public meeting. I ask, I'll ask my board colleagues, I'm kinda gonna give you a little homework, which is, take these home, kind of read them, digest them. And, uh, to the public listening, also, they should be available as well on Symbly. Um, I'm hoping maybe Ms. Lyle's still on, listening, but, um, I would really encourage the DAC in particular, the new legislative committee that's on there, to read through them as well and provide us feedback, um, on them. So, let me, uh, kind of lay a bit of background first. So, there are two ways people do legislative priorities. Some do a very lengthy list, twenty-some-odd, uh, priorities. We tend to focus on a few that we know that we are going to put our effort into for not just the next year. We may have priorities that you will see year after year because, um, as you learn, in Jefferson City, things don't typically get done within a year. It, it, there's a little bit of building blocks and some work that has to be done. So, many of these are actually ones that we have had before and as a committee. And a reminder of who's on the committee, it is a board committee made up of myself, Ms. Rita Cortez, and Manny Abarca. But also, it's one of the committees that really does a lot of its work jointly with the administration. So, Dr. Bedell and a number of people from his cabinet also participate. And so, we work together collaboratively, collaboratively to, um, bring forward these priorities. So, let me walk through some of, I'm not gonna read them all, just so you all know, but I want you to understand why certain ones are still on. So, the first one, which we also know will probably be one of the largest priorities of the, um, leadership of legislators, um, and the charter folks, is really what, what is, uh, equity funding, funding. And it is the, actually, the last bullet in the first equitable treatment of public education in charter counties. Um, last year, we made the decision to move two of our priorities together. One was the equity funding component, but also were the number of things that we'd like to, um, try to advocate for to level the playing field of schools within, um, charter counties. And so, that will continue to be on our, we're recommending that that continue to be on our list. Um, now, here's one that I know in committee, we actually talked about taking off, and let me explain why. Um, one of the other things to consider with legislative priorities is, are we gonna take the lead or are we gonna be the secondary? Because we can't be the lead on everything. And this one in particular, we had it on, this will be the third year if we end up keeping it on. Um, we are not really so much leading in this one as maybe taking a secondary role, um, letting others, I know Desi, this is gonna be one of the areas of focus for them. The reason why, um, I kinda made a committee chair decision to keep it on in the draft form and talk about this was, in the committee meeting, um, Ms. Courtney Adams made a really, really good point, I think, which is, this is one of the priorities that actually our parents and possibly our students could get behind, um, in their testimony. This is something that they feel, you know, very viscerally. And I, I think we ought to maybe think about that, try to get some feedback on that from them, because I think it's a way to help. One of the things we're gonna try to do this year is do more things collaboratively with, um, maybe with DAC when we're doing some of our legislative, um, advocacy. So, that's why I decided to leave it on there, but I, I would like feedback. Um, maybe, I think in the past, we used to actually put priorities and secondaries, but, um, I don't know that we listed that way, but... Um, the next one on the back is Hancock Amendment Protections. And I, you know, Ms. Quinley kind of alluded to the reason why this is extremely important to us to begin to do the building blocks on, uh, working with legislators to understand. I think it was maybe two sessions ago or one session ago, they wanted to, to kind of remove us, um, and, and kind of change and put us under Hancock but without certain protections. And that could actually have a very devastating effect, as Ms. Thompson nods her head vigorously, um, to our revenues. And so, this is one that I'd be happy to explain in more detail, but this was one that we felt we need to keep on here. It probably will not get much play this next time, but we'll work on, um, building the foundation for the next couple of years. And then, really important, um, teacher compensation. This one also has been on, I think, for three years, Dr. Bedell. Um, of course, uh, everybody, you know, agrees about the competitive wages, um, necessary within having those in the state budget. But really, for this one, we're also asking to, um, have a differentiated pay scale in two areas, hard-to-fill subject areas and, uh, schools classified as comprehensive or targeted. So, we would like to keep those on the, um, legislative priority list. So, uh, with that said, what we did learn also was, typically, we have to have this kind of approved at the last minute, I mean, at the very latest, at the end of November. We have a legislative breakfast usually at the beginning of December, so we like to have it ready to go for that. But, Mr., um, Ropie from Barge and Associates said, "In actuality, for, for us to be most effective, the sooner we can get this approved, um, the sooner they can begin to work with legislators before things start to get really busy down in Jefferson City." So, with that said, I would like to maybe suggest, if possible, to get all feedback by October eighth, if possible. I don't know if that's too quick of a turnaround, um, for us. I don't know that we are allowed to adopt business, um, at the monitoring, uh, to adopt, uh, a piece of business in a monitoring, uh, meeting.
Yeah, we can.
We can, so. Okay. So, um, that would be, um, what I'd like to suggest, but if we feel that that's too compressed of a timeframe, I was kind of thinking it wouldn't be too much, since these are not changing pretty much at all. So, um, I'd like to hear from my colleagues about how they feel about that. Yeah, about moving the deadline up and then trying to vote on it at the, um, I believe we have a, and a, a meeting on ten-thirteen, so that would give us from that Friday to have it in our packet to read and be able to discuss at the ten-thirteen meeting, if we've had any questions. Um, the other one thing I wanted to mention was, I believe today we also had our, do we have our first legislator bus tour? So, I, I would just wanna make mention of this, if I could. Um, in the Government Relations Meeting, um, Rita had made a wonderful suggestion about maybe possibly having legislators come and see our schools, um, because I think a lot of times, they don't know what we do. And so, um, the administration, you know, took that idea and ran with it. And I believe we had our first one today, and we have another one in October, and... And um, so, I just wanted, I don't know if you wanna talk about it.
It was a wonderful day. Um, we had three with us and um, geez, I don't remember all of the names. At least, I know Emily, we, Emily Weber was with us, Patty Lewis, that's the one I can't get. Oh, Maggie Nunenbar, I just met her today for the first time. And um, we visited Truist, we visited uh, Paseo to look at the Exceptional Education Program there. And then we took them over to uh, learn about our middle college, uh, where we service seventeen to twenty-four year olds that have dropped out of school. And then she als- they also had an opportunity to understand our early college. Two hours wasn't enough time. It went by way too fast. And um, we felt like we were rushing because I think we spent a lot of time at the first site, a lot more than we needed to. But it was important, so we just gotta look at the, at the time adjustments. I believe we do a second round on the sixth of October. But it was eye opening for them because, you know, when we went over to these sites, um, they, they, they saw that it wasn't a um, staged visit. Uh, when we got to Paseo, the principal liked, so can you all tell me what you need me to do, where do you need to go? And, and um, but that's how I roll. I don't, I do unannounced visits, and I think it's important for people to see it in its authenticity. And that's what they got to see today.
So.
I wanna make one other point. We invited every single legislator on the Senate and the House Ed Committees, every one of them. Now, who's attended, and maybe they're gonna get this message through the web. But the people who've attended are our local legislators, and I thank them immensely. But the people making legislation in this state had an opportunity to come see the schools that actually are going to be most affected by that legislation, and they passed on the opportunity. But they have another opportunity, October tenth, and we would love to have them join. Six, sorry, October sixth.
Yeah, a lot of vacant seats on that nice bus today. So, there is room and um, and like we've said to people, you know, they could come in town and they could say, we wanna go to these following schools, and we'll do it. We don't, we don't need any advance notice. And that's what these three legislators said. They don't understand the perception after they walked in our buildings today and saw what's going on in those schools.
Mr. Barca?
And our goal is for it to be bipartisan. We want people from the other party that did not come to be present in our building.
Agreed. Uh, Ms. Cortez, did you have anything for finance committee or no?
We met.
So noted.
Thanks.
Alright, uh, for uh, board member voice, we'll go, we'll go over to Mr. Barca.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, yeah, so I asked uh, our chair tonight uh, to give me a few minutes to talk about the importance of Hispanic Heritage Month, um, about representation. Uh, and in fact, uh, I also asked our board secretary um, where our records were um, and found out that we have a cage full of all our historical documents. Um, so I went digging, uh, fighting spiders to try and identify how many Latinos we've ever had serve on the Board of Education. Um, in our little over a hundred and fifty years, I was interested to understand truly how a population had been represented. I found, to my surprise, uh, but disappointment, there have only been nine ever. In a hundred and fifty odd years, there have been nine Latinos to ever serve on this school board of education. That is tremendously disappointing, but not surprising sadly, right? As we all saw, one of our own, um, at a previous role, evaluate the diversity and representation of our region, there, there are two of us, um, currently that serve on boards in our region. The representation, not only for us to have voices at the table, but for kids to see us in these roles, is incredibly important. Um, as I dug some more, I found out that actually, um, our earliest serving member was in the sixties, um, which was surprising to me, uh, but um, good to hear. We had a Latino superintendent in nineteen ninety-one, uh, which was also a surprise. We had a Latino Chair of the School Board in nineteen ninety-eight. Uh, these are things that I did not realize of our own district. As we celebrate the Hispanic Heritage Month, I challenge you all to continue to make sure this priority for all representation, not just Latino, not just during the month of, well, the half months uh, that we get. Um, but to look around, because there are so many times when I am in the only Latino in a room trying to advocate. And I don't, in fact, always embrace all of my culture because I don't speak Spanish, so I can't get it all myself. And I can't truly represent um, without others supporting me. So, please, and anytime you have the opportunity, make space for other diverse voices. Make sure you're asking about the other things that should be brought up in the room. And make sure I'm not the only one asking about Latino things, or Rita isn't the only one asking about Latino things, because the reality is, this wave of Latino students is hitting every district across the country. And there are so many opportunities for us to look at principals, administrators, teachers, and and go beyond just the donation to a fundraiser for one time a month. We need to do the real work and talk about pipelines to make sure these folks are in the room and sitting next to us. So, thank you, Dr. Bedell. Thank you to my colleagues, 'cause I know that we've had very good discussions amongst all of us about this important issue, but we still got a lot of work to do.
Thank you, Mr. Barca. Well said, well said. Alright, Dr. Bedell, are you um, policy and governance?
Alright, so, we'll get started with the first piece of action. Um, the administration is asking the board to adopt the updating policies to Board Policy Appendix D, IGBCA Program for Homeless Students.
Alright, any questions? Is there a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, um, of the board, or for the Board of Directors to adopt new updated and/or amended administrative policies and procedures?
Second.
Alright, June, will you please call a roll?
Mr. Barca?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolsey?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes, the motion passes.
Uh, the next item, um, that the administration needs the board to take action on is the setting of the twenty twenty-one property tax rates. You received that presentation earlier today. Um, and at this point, we're just asking the board to take action on it.
Alright, any questions?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't read this correctly. I'm looking in my notes, so let me read this correctly. The setting of the twenty twenty-one local property tax rate at four point nine five nine nine, we are asking the board to take action on that.
Alright, now, any questions? Questions? Okay, is there a, a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to set the twenty twenty-one property tax levy in compliance with Article ten, Section eleven G of the Missouri Constitution? Um, yeah, Section one thirty-seven dot oh seven three, et cetera, um, to four point nine five nine nine.
Submove.
Second.
Alright, June, will you please call a roll?
Mr. Barca?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolsey?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes, the motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next item is the First Amendment to AT&amp;T Switch Ethernet Network Services in the amount of four hundred twenty-four thousand, three hundred sixty-four dollars and forty cents.
Any questions? Alright, no questions. Is there a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the First Amendment to Contract E one four zero zero five Switch Ethernet Network Services with AT&amp;T?
Submove.
Second.
Alright, June, will you please call a roll?
Mr. Barca?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, the motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And the final regular business item is Holdsworth Communication LLC in the amount of seventy-five thousand. The administration requests the approval of this contract to provide strategic marketing services to the sc- to the district.
Questions? Mr. Barca?
Just wanted to confirm that we added an addition about the MBEW component.
Oh, that's coming up.
And is it both, is it MBE and WBE or just?
Uh, I, I think we can, we can decide on what, what we, what we think. I mean, my thoughts were MBE or WMBE as opposed to just WBE. I think that's just reflective, so the public understands what we're talking about here. That's just reflective of wanting to make sure that we have diverse representation in the subcontractor here in Kansas City to help support um, Holdsworth, um, as they go do that, um, they go do that work from, from Minneapolis. I think it's Minneapolis is where they are. Oh, I'm not even, it starts with an M, hi, so Michigan apologies. Ms. Buckner?
I, I don't wanna, you know, take away from your comments, but, or were you gonna unpack how we decided upon that, or should I?
Well, you, you, you can, no, you're, yeah, for free.
Okay, um, so, uh, myself along with others, um, on the board, we have, we had concerns about Holdsworth Communications, their lack of diversity, um, them being, um, you know, based uh, north. Um, you know, and the fact that we had voted down a local company, um, that was diverse, was, um, you know, concerning to a lot of us. And so, um, after much discussion and a lot of deliberation about this, we've decided, um, that, you know, we absolutely need a communications uh, firm, a marketing firm that, um, is well versed in education specifically. Um, however, we also want to ensure that, um, you know, diverse voices are represented um, and can really speak to our local competitive market. Um, and so, um, this, this, this amendment to this contract states that, uh, Holdsworth will, um, will, what am I, what is, what's the word I'm trying to use? Will subcontract a local, um, MBE/WBE company, correct?
Yep, I, I'll just make one tweak, which would be MBEs or WMBEs.
Sorry, yes.
Yep. Yep, good, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Well, um, is there a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the agreement with Holdsworth Communications to provide strategic marketing services to Kansas City Public Schools with the stipulation that the district will add local, um, MBE slash WMBE subcontractor to provide local and minority support on the project?
Second.
So, it moved in second, June, will you please call a roll?
Mr. Barca?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolsey?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes, the motion passes. Dr. Bedell?
Uh, I think that concludes the regular business items, Mr. Chair.
Perfect, thank you. So, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Are there any questions? No, okay. Was there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Submove.
June, will you please call a roll?
Mr. Barca?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, the motion passes. Alright, we're getting to the end. I really appreciate, um, the administration's patience, um, as well as the public and my fellow board members. June, will you please, uh, just review action items for tonight?
Bedell, let me, let me, let me cut that, okay. So, regarding Homeroom twenty twenty, there is a request to have a review or a report on the successes of twenty twenty. What were the goals, the amounts of hours, what is the return on the investment, and what are goals for this year, and how do you plan to evaluate these goals? Did I say that wrong?
That was that for KCPS Homeroom, yes.
For Homeroom, yes. Um, the strategy for the billboards, the request, would like to have a report on the reasoning or rationale on how the decisions were made on the public relations, how you made these decisions. Um, this may have been answered, was that answered? Um, the, a report on the re- reasoning or rationale for the strategy for the billboards, that was your question. Okay, that's still there, very good. Okay, a question on, um, as for funding, would like to see the details of how the funding is being spent and how it is addressing the priority needs. Wants to have greater details of the spending on enhanced instructional environments.
No.
About forty million broken down.
No, that's something I'll follow up with Dr. Bedell on.
Okay. I'll take that one off. Um, the next one, um, is how do, does the monies affect academic achievement? How do we, I think what you used was tease, tease out what is working and what is not working following the spending of the monies, um, that affect ec- academic achievement, did I catch that wrong?
You, no, you got it right. I don't expect, you know, that is just a bigger, um, existential question that I don't expect an answer to.
Yeah, I do grab things. I do grab things. Okay, planning, um, to what extent do we incorporate city planning and development in the Blueprint twenty thirty process? And then, I just made a note for October thirteenth, uh, would like to have legislative priorities voted on on the October thirteenth meeting. Um, please have the changes to, Ms. Wolsey, by the eighth. And I believe that you got it.
Yep, and then the final one would be, uh, just, um, ensuring that we get that additional language added into the Holdsworth Communication Contract Prior to Execution.
And Mr. Chair, I wanted to add one more. Um, if it would be okay, we, and I'm, I'm referring to this because we had a, a report from the DAC, and they mentioned the DAC organizations, but I would like to know, um, Ms. Lyle alluded to a number of schools that do have parent orgs. Could we know as a, a board, um, which schools have parent orgs, which ones they are? Um, are they parent led or building personnel led? And if they're parent led, who are the officers, and when do they meet? 'Cause I'd like to.
I'll get that from you.
Yeah, I'd like to, um, know, because we, we could attend some of those, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you, June. Any, uh, final questions or comments from the administration or the board? I think we're all a little tired. Thank you, guys, appreciate it. We're adjourned.